This conference will now be recorded.
Well, I've got one too.
Four-minute warning to the meeting starts.
It's, uh, we're hoping.
On that.
Thanks for that.
I have no idea. I can't, I can't. I just. Well, I just don't.
Hey, there must be time. Call this meeting in order. Please stand, keep standing for the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will take place Friday, September the ninth, two thousand twenty-two, at nine AM at the Community Center, three-five-hundred Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida, three-three-eight-seven-two. Please silence or turn off your cellphone. We'll begin with the consent agenda. A minutes of the Board of Supervisors, regular, regular meeting held July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Okay. I, I really.
I was gonna.
Go ahead.
I think the remark, I could say, is kind of embarrassing because all our technology went haywire and we didn't have any notes. And I'm at peace in trying to work with the board members and put some notes in that were taken, so we're gonna be filling it in the next week. I wouldn't ask you to approve it, but we'll bring it back. But all the, all the motions were five-oh on the action items, and there's some limited, but we want to fill in some of the conversations. So we just want to know, we didn't ignore it, we're sorry, and I think we're all set with the prime system and a backup. And I'll say, one of the things that happened is their go-to meeting, their server went down, and we didn't find out that till after the meeting, and they were kind of evasive about it. But what we've done is we're still using theirs for the backup system, but we're running the Microsoft Teams and running all that off our system, and we paid Comcast now fifty dollars extra a month to have a redundant internet line going in here. So I apologize for that, but we'll have a full product for you at the next meeting.
So based on what we have today, I would like for somebody to make a motion to wait until the next meeting.
Make a, make a motion to table of minutes of July twenty-second until the next meeting.
Second.
Any comments from the board, any comments from the public? We have a vote, please.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurlick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes. Twice.
Herrick, Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
And President Brooks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Be minutes of the Board of Supervisors, regular meeting held August the fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments on those, those notes? I will tell you, just in general, that's the best set of notes I've seen in a long time. So I'm not sure who did it, but I'd like to keep them doing it, because it's pretty accurate and it's pretty detailed, et cetera, than it's been. So my compliments to whomever. Anything else from the board? Any public comments? Have a vote.
Supervisor Hurlick?
Herrick.
Herrick, sorry.
Don't confuse me with Hurley.
Yes.
Supervisor, Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. Golf financials, we'll take them one at a time. Golf financials, May two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any board comments on these, on May? Any, no board comments? Any public comments on May? Do you want to say anything, Michael, about May?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, let's vote on May.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. Okay, let's go to June, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion for that?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any board comments on June's numbers? I do have a question.
Yes.
Would you explain to me again? I'm still stuck on this average rate deal.
Sure.
Because when I looked at it this time, I know you just see change, the changes were made, but now it says, for the month-to-date, the average rate was twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents, which seems low, but what exactly is that number?
Okay, so the average rate line, so that is, if you take our green fee revenue and divide it by public rounds, which is regular public rounds plus tournaments, and that is the average green fee rate.
So isn't, isn't twenty-two dollars low?
It is, I mean, it, it's the lowest at the point of the year, but is it low for June? No, it's not. You gotta remember, we have all sorts of different rates that go in there. That's, that's not our primetime rate, for sure, but when you start adding Twilight and you add league, our league goes in there, league's a nine-hole rate, so that does drag it down a little bit. But as you, I mean, you notice that it's, it's two dollars higher than prior year.
But you budgeted thirty-two.
If you're looking at June, the budget of nineteen dollars and eight cents.
Oh, all right, all right, never mind. Too far over. Uh, it just seems low to me. Well, then, if that one's low, the next line is really confusing, because APR for the month is sixty-one dollars and twenty-six cents?
So that's total revenue, that's total revenue for the whole club divided by total rounds.
For the whole, including the restaurant?
Correct.
Oh, well, that.
So if you just take that total revenue line of two forty-four divided by total rounds of the three thousand nine fifty-four, that's what that rate is. Total revenue divided by total rounds.
But why would the, why would, I mean, what good is this number? It's not really relating to golf, it's relating to the whole complex.
Right, and that's, it's a little bit, it's, it may be a little bit different for us, but, you know, in the, in the general golf world, that you would do that, because you want to know every time somebody walks through the door, what's that worth? Obviously, we have revenue that comes into the restaurant that doesn't necessarily correlate to golf, they just, they're coming in to eat, but in the general world, that's a very common KPI.
Yes, it is, because a lot of golfers get food on.
Correct.
Beverage and it, that's kind of standard procedure.
Right.
Yeah, but this includes everything, it's just.
Yes. When a person walks.
Includes people who walk into the restaurant.
When a person in club walks in your club, how much does the average person spend?
Right, and that's, yes. So every, every, for every round.
I mean, I have a problem with it, but if you guys are okay with it, that's fine.
So every, so, so that number, the APR, that's your average dollar spent per round. So that is, every time we send somebody out on the tee, in that month, it was worth sixty-one dollars.
That's not true.
It's a, you're correct, it is a little bit skewed in our, in our world, because we do have folks that do come into the restaurant that aren't playing around in golf, but that is a common KPI in the golf world.
I mean, to me, the number is.
You want, it, what it's telling you is, when a person walks on property and walks to inside, comes inside the circle, how much are they worth?
Right.
How much did they spend on that month? It's very common.
If, if you want to look at it differently.
Well, I, I, it's a golf report, so I would just like to see it as a golf.
Well, it's, it's, well, it's a business report, I mean, that includes our entire operation, it's not split.
If you guys are okay with it, that's fine. I just don't see this, I just don't see what the number.
Well, obviously, obviously, the idea of KPIs is trying to help you understand where, where things are coming from and, and things like that. So if you want to look at it differently to, to understand exactly, I mean, we could, I could come up with other KPIs to add to it, I mean, that's just what we've always had in there. Obviously, we adjusted it a couple months ago. I mean, you don't take KPIs to the bank, so I don't, I'm happy to.
So if you have a huge banquet, and you have five hundred, two hundred and fifty people, and you're serving them meals.
Right.
They get that number, they're not playing golf, but that number gets turned into.
That is correct, that is correct.
It's just part of the total revenue.
It's total revenue divided by total rounds.
You guys are okay with it, that's fine.
But it, it's immaterial how they do it, I mean, we're looking at the bottom line, I mean, it's just something that they, I mean, it makes no difference to me. It's not the bottom line. They can say eighty dollars a person, but, you know, yeah, it's.
Well, if they're gonna make a report, you might as well make it worthwhile. That's my point. All right, obviously, it's just me that it bothers the most, so that's fine. Any other comments on it? Any public comments on the June financials? I mean, I'll just note, and I've told you this, so just one parting remark, that you guys are running real well, and in the last three months worth of reporting, you, you missed it by sixty-some-odd thousand dollars.
Right, coming in.
And what was looking like it was going to be a phenomenal year is now, we're not so sure.
We're, it's definitely slowing down, for sure, yep. And it's, well, to be honest with you, it's not on the revenue side, it's, it's definitely on the expense side. Now, part of that, especially in the June expense, you gotta, remember, we, we told you about the wall-to-wall fertilizer app that we did that ended up running over budget? That's, that's basically, as far as June miss goes, that's basically where, where that is. Obviously, May, we're coming out of, out of season, we, we were really slow in May, just due to certain situations, and expenses are, I mean, everybody, everybody understands that, we put this budget together, it was sixteen months prior to, to that happening, and obviously, we didn't know that our expenses were going to rise as much as they had. So that is a contributing factor, too. It's mostly on the expense side, because the revenues are, are pretty decent.
Okay. Any public comments on this? We have a vote, please. Thank you, Mike.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes. Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurlick? Herrick? Must be, sorry.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. Okay, moving on, public comment, this is the part of the meeting, for anybody who'd like to make any comments, that does not involve anything that we're going to discuss on the agenda. So is there any public comments anybody would like to make that is not going to be something we're going to cover later on? I'll take that as a no.
Very high down the stage, I'm sorry. There's too much bass.
Too much bass. Can we turn up the treble? We, we know that there's a, Chris is working on a, a solution for the mics, he's, we spoke about it yesterday. Do you want to update what you're thinking?
Oh, we're, we're looking at the entire system, but looking at two types of microphones that'll work better, that nobody has to swallow to make them work, and also maybe some just dedicated speakers instead of the room and getting the reverb. So we're making some updates to this system, and by the next meeting, we'll have some other updates.
We're trying to help you out, so you can hear. Do you have a pair?
I didn't bring it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
That's good.
I had the same problem.
We'll order another set of those, also.
Is there a public comment on something coming up?
No, on any, on something that is not coming up.
Anything that's not.
Anything that's not on the agenda, that you'd like to bring up, now is the time to do it. If it's on the agenda, let's wait till we get there.
Bill Knopf, resident, I understand that it's a hundred-thousand-dollar amount of money that's going to, go towards the, the road system over in Shoemaker. And we got something from the, the county, from what I understand, and I appreciate any work done by the county like that. We could use every grant money we could possibly get or gift.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, next, is there any other comments?
Dave Albig, does that include comments on the budget, or should we wait until the budget?
I'd appreciate if you would wait.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you gonna ask, could you ask for comments before you start?
Sure.
So a person doesn't have to wait through the whole process?
We have to stay here.
Well, I know, but I, I've got some.
Yes, I will do, I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? Scott Kirk? I guess I, we need you to address that hundred grand.
Yeah, good morning. Craig, don't feel bad, Ray Butchers is my name every time I come up here. It's, it's Kerouac, but that's a tough name to grow up, you know, we weren't so blessed with Brooks as a last name or what have you, so try to go, grow up with Kerouac and see how you get your mail and how people pronounce your name through your entire life, so.
I'm gonna highlight.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
You got a solution, it's Scott.
Just call me Scott. Scott's pretty simple and easy. Good morning, everybody, thank you for inviting me once again, and to give you a little update, a couple things I'll report to you, you've got three different things. We continue to work on our budget, like you folks are, our budget staff has been working hard, and looks like we've got the millage down to eight-point-one, we've been at eight-point-five-five for eight years, so this will be the first reduction in eight years. For those that are, have homestead, or homesteading their property, protected by the three percent valuation cap, the millage reduction was about a five-and-a-half percent reduction, so they will see a little reduction in their taxes. If you homestead your property, you're going to see a little reduction in your general revenue type of taxes from the county this go-around. Or fire assess, I'm sorry, a solid waste assessment, we'd have to raise that six dollars and thirty cents per year, about fifty cents a month, that's going to generate about a quarter of a million dollars more for the solid waste fund, that is an enterprise fund, so those funds can only be used for the, for solid waste. And we are currently under, undergoing a expansion of landfill for the second cell, it's gonna be about a fourteen-million-dollar expansion to create the second cell for the landfill, and we've been putting money in reserve for that for many years now, so we're gonna get started on that. There's been, I think, maybe some of y'all that maybe seen the newspaper or social media that we did change some of the speed limits on Panther Parkway, which was forty-five, pretty much up and down there, so any of y'all that drive the Parkway, that can be a little bit, you know, to be honest with you, there's not a whole lot of speed enforcement there because of how much of an open road it is, but we were able to change the speed limit to fifty-five on some sections of that road, there's been some comments from the public, why didn't we just change it all the way through? Well, it has to do with how the road was engineered, elevation changes, curves in the road, and the way that roads are engineered, and FDOT grants and what have you dictates what speed limit on those sections of the road. So we couldn't change the speed limit on certain sections of the Parkway, we would like to, but it'd create a liable situation for the county if there was accidents or what have you. In our meeting on Tuesday, that was successful, and starting a capital, a capital finance project for the Schumacher Road paving project that we're talking about, to get in this year's budget, that we're going to put a hundred thousand dollars in that fund for this upcoming project, and I'll continue to work on that, on other funding, like I'd stated earlier, I'm be meeting and talking with landowners on Schumacher, because, once again, I want to remind you folks, is that the current policy, county commission policy is a fifty percent, fifty-fifty split between the county and the landowners on that road, and we've all talked about that. So what I just want to tell you is that, you know, I have brought it to the other commissioners' attention on some land sales out here, what have you, and being the largest community in Sun and Lakes, if you listened to the meeting on Tuesday, I explained to them the concerns on the traffic on Sun and Lake Boulevard, your main entrance coming into your community, and that is the, the county road, that is the county road, we maintain Sun and Lake Boulevard, the other roads are maintained by your district. So with the amount of development and the traffic increases on Sun and Lakes Boulevard, that's why we're all here, and we've been talking together between you folks and myself about the need for another entrance coming into Sun and Lakes, a south entrance, okay? Expressed before that there certainly are concerns on the traffic load coming on to Schumacher Road, down by twenty-seven and Schumacher Road. Anybody that uses that intersection, when it gets busy, travel times, the side entrance to Walmart, the frontage road that goes behind the bank there, and Walgreens and what have you, it can get pretty, pretty jammed up in there. So, you know, that is something that certainly engineering and staff is going to be looking at also. So I wanted to at least, I did not want to continue to work on this paving project and start putting funding together from potential property owners out there, because there's other property owners other than Sun and Lakes that are on Schumacher Road, which if paving that road is going to raise the values of their property. There's a church down that road, I can imagine when it's a rainy day and you're going to church and what have you, your car is getting pretty nasty going down there. So I'm gonna talk to everybody involved and see what kind of funding, Vinnie, that we can get from the landowners along that road. But I, you know, certainly that if any change is going to be made to the current policy of the fifty-fifty split, it will take a majority of the commission to decide that, okay? So that will take at least three of us to vote in favor of that, I am one, okay? I will keep you updated on that as, as it progresses forward. Talk, I've continually talked to staff about whether paving down just to where Cortez would come out, and I explained to them that you folks have committed to paying for the Cortez extension out to Schumacher, you know, that that's your responsibility and that you've agreed that that's your responsibility, okay? But that still leaves the other half, if we just paved down to that, down to Blueberry, that wouldn't be paved. That creates a couple scenarios for the county, a lot of times when we go to pave a road, a shell road or what have you, we also, we also look at if we don't pave the entire thing, we still have the responsibility to go out there and grade with a grader the unpaved portion of that road. So we have to look at if we have other roads in the area that the grader is servicing also, then it's not that much big of a deal to get the grader still to grade that other half of the road. But if you're bringing a grader from the north end or the south end of town, down here to grade just half of a road, we look at whether that makes the most sense moving forward is to pave all, only down to Cortez. Another concern is that if we pave all the way down to Blueberry, that some sort of cul-de-sac we would have to create down at the end of Blueberry for turnaround, and big enough for big trucks. Because a lot of people that drive semis or big trucks, when they transition off of pavement onto shell, most of them that are good drivers, a little red flag goes up and says, okay, if I'm driving a semi and I get off on this shell road and I get all the way down, a half a mile down the road, and I find out that I'm lost, how do I get back out? I can tell you how you get back out, you back up very, very slowly in a semi, which is difficult to do in long stretches. So we have to look at that when we redesign the road, it's mentioned before, the road has to be shifted to the north, utilities have to be relocated. If we pave down to just Cortez, the, the estimate right now is about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. If we pave all the way down to Blueberry and create the cul-de-sac, we're looking at about a half a million-dollar project to, to do that. So we're continually talking about that back and forth, but I felt that it was in our best interests as a county, and for you folks out here at Sun and Lakes, that I at least try to get some funding started for the county end, okay? Because if I wait to the tail end of negotiating with everybody else and try to see what other funding that come, I don't want to come to the commission next year, or in twenty-four when this starts, that now the county doesn't have budgeted funding to, to cover at least fifty percent, if not more. So I said, let's show our commitment to the other commissioners that we're committed to this project, and let me continue to work on it and work on funding sources for that. I'm gonna have staff look at any kind of grant opportunities for rural roads or what have you that we may be able to access, so I just want to let you know that I'm continually working on that. But I do want to make it clear what the current policy is, and that's that fifty-fifty split. And it may, you know, as we progress in this, and I will keep you guys updated as I come to the meetings, that how that then works is each of you as supervisors need to make contact with the other commissioners and advocate for your position, and you would do that individually with each one of them, because we can't discuss any of this. I can't call up my fellow commissioners and say, hey, I can't call up my fellow commissioners and say, hey, work with me here. The people of Sun and Lakes, the largest residential community in the county, okay? Work with me to help me get this road paved. That's against the law. I cannot do that. I could be removed from office. That's a violation of sunshine law, okay? You guys are bound by sunshine law. You know how it works. So as this progresses forward, I will keep you updated. And it may require some efforts on your part to advocate to each of the other commissioners. Because basically what you need is three, okay? You have one, but unless you get two more, I have no authority and I have no power with this, okay? And I want you folks to understand and the community to understand that certainly I'm trying everything I can do, you know? It was a heavy lift on the five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars worth of ARPA funding that I brought, but I didn't give up and I felt that I could get it done and I got it done, okay? I will continue to work on the paving of Schumacher Road. And there's other landowners out there. And even if I can't come up with fifty percent, if I can come up with something to show some goodwill towards from the other landowners because it raises your property values. All of a sudden, if you have a property on a dirt road and now it is a paved and improved county maintained road, it's gonna add to your property value. Those lots there along Schumacher Road, okay? That opens up a world of possibility for somebody now coming in wanting to build a home on one of those lots that are along there simply because it's a paved road. Who wants to buy a three hundred thousand dollar house plus on a shell road? That every time it rains, you've got, you've got a mess. So, you know, there's a lot of arguments that can be made and the advantages of paving a road. So I will continue to work on that. And if anybody has any other questions county-wise, I'd be glad to address them.
Scott, I just wanted to tell you, for me personally, if we go to Cortez, we own one lot to Cortez, and that's the one we're gonna put the road on.
Correct, yes.
But I can tell you for seven years, when we first started working on this, that I mean, I have no problem with, if you go to Blueberry, we have seven more lots.
Great.
And if that, I would have no problem putting into that myself personally. But my problem was, when we brought it up, they said, since you brought it up, you have to pay the fifty percent. And that's, that's not, I won't, it might pass, but I will never agree to that.
And I agree, I agree. I mean, you have one lot down to Cortez.
Right, and that's the one that's, we're gonna put this.
Exactly, so it's not gonna be a buildable lot.
Right, so just so you know, I mean, I'm in support of this and I can't talk to my fellow supervisors either.
Even some of the other landowners, the church, and certainly I believe in churches and, you know, it's the community and they raise money for their congregation to keep their church going and what have you. But, you know, maybe they find it that they could donate five to ten thousand dollars towards that cause. Maybe another property owner says, well, you know, I'll put in five thousand dollars towards it or what have you, or I'll put in a couple grand towards it. Anything is better than nothing.
That's right.
Okay, anything is better than nothing. If I can work with some of the others and say, I've got commitments out of some of the others, and we're getting closer to that fifty percent, but we're still twenty percent away, okay? Then I think we have a much better chance and other commissioners waiving from policy. And you have to understand, the same thing you two or that five of you are elected for up here is that every decision you make sets a precedence, okay? So we have to look at every decision we make as a county commission that if we vary from a policy, I treat everybody equally, or you are. So if we do it for one, potentially have to do it for others that come in front of us. And then all of a sudden, you've got people coming from Spring Lake or what have you and say, well, you didn't hold them to the fifty fifty. You paid for eighty and they paid for twenty. We want the same deal. And then all of a sudden, the funding's not there and nobody gets nothing. So we will continue to work on this. I believe if we all work together, that this will come to fruition, okay? But I can tell you, best case scenario on this project, I tell you, by the time working on funding, the engineering, relocation of utilities, you're probably looking at doing this sometime in twenty twenty-four, starting twenty twenty-four. You know, you're looking probably at close to, you know, eight to twelve months of simple engineering and working with the utility companies and getting it on their calendar and getting these things moved. So fortunately, this isn't a simple process that we just have a shell road that we can add a little bit more shell to, compact it, put pavement down, stripe it, and off we go. That would be great because it'd probably be done by now. But this is a different, this is a whole different scenario. We'd basically be reconstructing that road. We'd be pulling it up, using what material we can that's already there, save money, putting the road back down to the north with drainage on each side and relocating utilities. So I'm committed to it and I will continue to work on it for you folks.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any, any questions for Scott? You got a question?
Dave Albig, I agree with Mike that any property we have along that road, we need to pay, pay for it. Any other property, I disagree. You mentioned Spring Lake. Doesn't the county do all the Spring Lakes roads? The county's got the responsibility of doing all the Spring Lakes roads, but not. And I would suggest, when you talk to the county commissioners individually, that you remind them that Sun and Lake does their own road maintenance. It saves this county hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. And I know that Schumacher is gonna be a benefit to the district in the overall, but I don't think the residents of this district would have much of a stomach for paying, paying any more than what they, they owe on paving Schumacher Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to answer Mr. Albig's question, there are roads out in Spring Lake that the county had adopted, and they do do maintenance on those roads out there. How this all came together years and years ago, we know, was a whole different process. I've spoke with the Board of Supervisors before. And if this board ever chooses to take action on what it would look like for the county to take over the maintenance on this road, then I will have county staff here to do a presentation upon your instruction, okay? But we're certainly prepared to do that, what that would look like if the county was going to adopt all the maintenance on the roads out here. Then I would have staff from engineering and road and bridge. They would come and do a detailed presentation of what that would look like, okay? So just wanted to touch on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Thank you, Scott. What's that last name again? Okay. Okay, action agenda. ARPAs sub recipient agreement for grant funds. So I have a motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Chris?
I did want to add, of course, we've discussed this many times. The total amount's five hundred and sixty-one thousand. It's really water quality and process improvement reliability projects for the entire utility system. Clock will start ticking once we sign these. Then we have till December twenty twenty-three to execute these projects. We already have vendors coming in, making proposals. And it will make a big improvement to the system across the board. And also get, make the operations a lot easier and a lot, a lot more efficient with some of the instrumentation, instrumentation we're installing. We're putting a little generator on the backup valve that feeds water if our water goes off. So we don't have to worry about the hospital or getting a call on our phone and having to get in a truck and drive over there to activate the valve. So they're all good projects and we appreciate the help from the county. And it's gonna be a lot of work, but a lot of good work.
Any questions from the board?
I.
I would make a motion that we approve the staff recommendation.
I just got a quick question. Are you comfortable that we can get it all done by that December thirty-first date?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I am. We've got a running start with it already and done some preliminary plans for it. And some of these projects we put in before, like our backup Thompson pumps. We have a couple of those. We know the layout that we need. We've already gotten the pricing from the vendor for those pumps. So we've done a lot of work already, so we're gonna hit the ground running.
Okay, have you decided, are you gonna bid them out by project or are you gonna just put them out by, bid them out by vendor?
Well, we'll probably with most, most of these projects, we'll, we'll purchase the equipment ourselves and we'll hire vendors to do the insulation or help with slabs, electricians to help with the hookup, that type of thing. So we won't have to bid them out. We'll do them individually.
Okay, so we can expect, just so everybody's aware, we can expect to have to look, put out cash to buy the equipment or what have you, knowing that we'll get reimbursed later on.
Right, and you can submit the reimbursements to them every thirty days.
Oh, every thirty days?
Yes, sir. And the, the sub-recipient agreement is just required by the federal government. It's a pass-through to the county. And they require that agreement for the county to have with us. And these agreements aren't any different from anyone that receives this funding in the county. It's the standard.
Any questions, any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, I guess we vote.
Supervisor Hurick.
Herrick.
Herrick.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin.
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
President Brooks.
Yes.
Okay, two thousand twenty-three meeting calendar. Chris?
Motion.
Since you did it, it's yours.
Need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion.
Excuse me, motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chris?
Yes, and this is the calendar we've been discussing at the past few meetings. And we're going to every three weeks on a Monday change. And you see the calendar in front of you. And it doesn't interfere with any golf tournaments and hopefully with anybody's schedules. So we'll take this for approved today and it'll be published in the newspapers required. And during the year, if something comes up, as long as you provide proper notice, a date can be changed or a meeting can be added. So we'll, we'll publish this, but there is some flexibility in there.
Any board comments?
Just one. Because our fiscal.
Because our fiscal year is October. Starts in October. Do, do we want to start the three week in that fiscal year, for our fiscal year? Just a question.
I, just my thought, it's, it's already been published and we can't change it till January because I think it was.
Well, we published this year, right?
So when we publish it, now, we could do that, Craig, if we do publish it and do it till October next year if we want, if we want to change it for.
We've already published twenty twenty-two.
Right.
Okay.
Any other board questions? Any public comments? Vote, please.
Supervisor Gilpin.
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
President Brooks.
Yes.
Designation of board secretary, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Chris?
And this is just a formal designation the board needs to make. All the board members are assistant secretaries. Steven Bloom at Infomarc is designated as a board secretary. And it's just the board given authorization for staff to sign papers, meeting minutes, anything that comes across their desk.
Any board comments? Any public comments? Any comments from Carl?
No, I'm good.
You're good with this, okay? Just wanted to make sure. Okay, can we have a vote, please?
Supervisor Hurley.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin.
Yes.
President Brooks.
Yes.
Two in row.
Add-on items. Petitions and communications.
None.
Staff reports. I guess we'll start with general counsel.
Okay, Mr. Rhodes is back from vacation. I haven't had a chance to meet with him. I'm meeting with him next week. I did get an email that he's still in the process of searching for an expert witness for the Avanti suit. He's also, I've discussed in the past, he's been in communications with opposing counsel, not the specific, specific opposing counsel, but one of the, another attorney from the firm as far as potential settlement. So if we get to a point where we have a, we've negotiated a, a settlement discussion, we'll, we'll all get with Chris and we'll schedule a shade meeting. But he's still in discussion on that. The Auckland suit, which involves the fifth third bond issue, there was a hearing on the seventeenth. The judge took it under advisement, but we expect to have a ruling on that probably by the end of the month, hopefully. Code enforcement, I met with the Bobs last week and we talked with, talked about the issues that we've been having with garbage being placed in the right-of-way. Our code enforcement policies allow us, we have two different methods. We have notices and we have citations. Citations require personal observation of a person that's committing a violation. And it also involves, you know, if code violations that are occurring on someone else's, you know, property, property that's owned by a property owner, the district owns the right-of-way. So when stuff starts getting put in the right-of-way, it doesn't technically trigger our code enforcement policies. So what I am in the process of doing is drafting a new policy for the board to adopt about how dumping that occurs in the district's right-of-way will be handled. But up until that time, what my recommendation, after talking with the Bobs, is that we provide, if, if we see somebody dumping in the right-of-way, that they can issue a citation, you know, to that, that person. But if we find stuff that's been left in the right-of-way in front of a piece of property, that we just notice that property owner that, you know, because although it's our, it's the district's right-of-way, we still, you know, that property owner still has some obligations on how it's maintained. So that we send them a notice. The, the big issue is timing. And what we want to be able to do is not only clean up the, the problem, but to charge those cleaning costs to the property owner that's, you know, that's quote unquote caused it. So with our current policy, I think we have that ability. The issue becomes noticed because like I say, most of these, most of the issues occurs in, when, when we're dealing with rental properties. You know, the owner is not living there. There's most likely a lease in place. And the timing, you know, we don't want junk sitting out on the, in the right-of-way for weeks, you know? And usually there's at least a ten-day, there's a ten-day notice requirement unless there's, we've got some sort of emergent condition. Well, when we're dealing with junk, that's a health, you know, that's a health issue, can be a health issue. And so my recommendation to the board is that we direct the code enforcement department to issue a, either, and a lot of it's gonna be, you know, timing. Because if people are putting stuff out in the right-of-way expecting it to be picked up during bulk pickup, you know, we can't say, okay, well, you've got twenty-four hours to clean that up. So what we need to be able to do is give them some leeway as to how they're going to notice, you know, notice and then enforce the, the pickup of it. So what my recommendation would be is that we direct the code enforcement department to issue notices on any garbage that's left, that's still in the right-of-way, you know, past, let's say Friday. You know, because we know for a fact that if, most of our pickups are going to occur on, I think it's Thursday. So if it's still sitting there, if it's still, if it's still there on Saturday, it's not getting picked up. And we need to give them notice that they've got, I would say, forty-eight hours is reasonable notice to get it cleaned up. But if they don't clean it up within that time period, that we, they clean it up and we issue, you know, after issuing the notice to get it cleaned up, that we then charge them for the, the cleanup and, and dumping of that, that material. Our special magistrate has also been on vacation. I have, I'm scheduled to meet with him on the thirty-first about how much authority we have to do that with our currently drafted ordinances. So until that time, I, I think that we have a decent position, you know, an arguable position to direct code enforcement to take that, those steps. I'm also gonna get with Chris that when we send out our, the, the goal is gonna be to have the policy change completed before we send out our billing, you know, our annual assessment notices so that we can include in that assessment notice, here's our new policy regarding dumping in the district's right-of-way or in any district property, how we're going to handle those, those dumping issues. Because I'm sure there's still, you know, dumping that, dumping that occurs in different areas of the, of the district. So I don't know that I specifically need any action today from the board. But if we could get some sort of consensus that the code enforcement officers can issue notices to property owners But if we could get some sort of consensus that the code enforcement officers can issue notices to property owners that have, where there's been dumping that occurs in the district right of way in front of those properties. Does that make sense?
You want, you want them?
Yeah.
You want to wait till a couple of days after Thursday?
Yeah, I would say that if it's.
Pickup date. All right, so let's say they go out on a Saturday and they see what we saw on Granada.
Correct.
They can then issue a.
Notice.
Notice.
Directing it to be cleaned up within forty-eight hours.
And then we would clean it up?
When we clean it up, we will then.
Bill them for what it cost us to clean it up.
Correct.
Wait a minute, I have a question. Now you're talking if they put it out on Thursday, what happens? Because most of the time this is happening, it's happening on a Saturday or Sunday when they move out, when, when people move out. So a lot of the trash is getting out there on Saturday, Sunday and Monday. So how do they address that?
Well, that, that obviously is not for dump, I mean, that would not be for the normal pickup time. So the normal pickup time is Thursday. And so that's what I'm saying is if it's, if the, if it's not out, and that, like I said, they're going to have some leeway. And also remember, the, these people with the notices, these people are going to get their due process. You know, if they object to the, you know, what's being put upon them through the notice process, their, you know, their, their option is to either pay the fine or, you know, pay the cost at a reduced rate. That's the one thing that's, you know, kind of up in the air because if we issue, if the district issues a fine or, you know, for lack of a better term, a fine, and they have the, they can, in order to avoid having to bring it before the special magistrate, they pay seventy-five percent. And so there's going to be a cost to the district if we go this route. You know, we, we're going to take stuff out and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to have to pay our staff to clean it up. We're going to have to pay, pay the, the disposal charges. And we then turn around and give that number to the property owner. If the property owner says, okay, I'm not going to dispute it, they only pay seventy-five percent. So we're still, we're still going to get, you know, potentially stuck with twenty-five percent of it. But that's better than zero, which is what we've been getting.
Right.
So.
I think what Mike is saying is that so these people don't necessarily pay attention to when the trash is being picked up. They, they may put it out on a Monday, they don't really care what day they put it out, they just put it out. So what happens in that case?
Well, we can still, like I say, we still issue the notice unless they, let's say they put it out on Monday. And, you know, we give them the notice and if they don't clean it up within the twenty-four hours, I, it's, we, we could leave it up to the discretion of the code enforcement people to see if.
Quite frankly, a lot of the times we're told by people calling in and saying there's a trash problem across the street or down the block or what have you. That's how we find out a lot, about a lot of these things.
Yeah, and I mean, and they can go by and see, like I say, the issue on Granada, that was obvious that that was not going nothing. Even if it was put it out on, on a Wednesday evening, all of that was not going to get picked up on Thursday. So their, you know, their skill set is they can, they should be able to determine, yes, this is something that could conceivably get picked up or no, there's no way this is going to get picked up by the, you know, and like I say, bulk pickup is every other week. So a lot of it's going to depend on, you know, when it's actually put out. That's going to be up to their discretion.
You had mentioned at the last meeting that we might have to get this approved by the county, is that still?
Well, no, yeah, and that's because we have, like I say, we're dealing with the change of the five popular seats, that proposal. So my goal is to, you know, make all of those revisions because the county doesn't like us to come to them, you know, oh, we want this change. And then the next month, we want this change, the next, we aren't trying to get all of our changes done at, you know, done at once. But I'm saying with our current, the way this stuff is currently drafted, I still think we have this ability. Our goal is going to be in the, in making these revisions is going to be to improve it so that there's no question that absolutely we have this ability to do what we're going to, what I'm suggesting. So, but I think that with the way it's currently drafted, that we can still issue these notices and, and, and make these charges because they're going to have their due process if they want to come and talk to the special magistrate. And like I say, I may go and have my conversation with the special magistrate on the thirty-first and he may say, oh, no, you absolutely can't do that. Give me reasons why, and then we'll just have to go through the process of getting the ordinances changed. But between now and then, my recommendation is that we, the board through consensus can tell the code enforcement department to start issuing notices and cleaning up with the intent on passing those charges along to the property owner where.
So when, so when can we start fining them, David?
Now, that's what I'm saying, if you guys, yeah, if you guys. Yeah, so if you guys, if you guys give this consensus, yeah.
I would like to start that. So we need a consensus.
Any, any other board comments? Do we need?
One thing I want to know, wait, wait a minute, Ray, I want to know is when can code enforcement start fining the people when they put the stuff out? Immediately, yes or no?
You know, not, not immediately, but after the, like I say, we're going to give them a notice.
Right.
And that notice, I would say that it would be no longer than forty-eight hours. They've got forty-eight hours to clean up the mess and if it's not cleaned up in forty-eight hours.
The fine starts.
That, yeah, the fine starts.
Well, that's when we go in and clean it up.
We go in and clean it up and charge them the costs.
They've got. They, they can put it out during the bulk week on Thursday and if it's not picked up by Friday, on Saturday, we can issue the.
Correct.
If it's out, if it's out any other day besides Thursday or Friday, we can start the process right then.
Correct.
And Bob, you're okay? Any other board comments? Any public comments on this? So is this a formal vote or just a consensus?
That's what I'm saying, I mean, it sounds to me like that's because we're not making any changes. This is the, we're still dealing with our current policy. I just wanted Bob to have the direction from the board that that's how we're going to start handling it until we get the changes made.
Okay, we all, anybody object to doing this?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Thank you. What else you got?
Other than that, let's say we're, I think the, the, the plan is, is for us to bring a formal contract for Chris back at the next board meeting. There's going to be some, I think there's some potential changes that are going to occur. And so I think, I don't think that there's anything else that would, while the board agreed to extend the contract, because there's going to be changes, we're going to have to bring that to the board at the next meeting for.
That's fine.
Formal approval.
Well, he'll, he'll put it on the agenda, okay? I, I have one question for you. I, I had asked at the last meeting about the district being able to contribute to a nonprofit organization. Did you have an opportunity to check that out?
I've done some basic research and I would not recommend it at this time based on the limited research that I've done. I'm still doing some other research and I'm going to talk with some other attorneys.
So you're still working on it?
Still working on it, but based on my current knowledge, I would say not at this time.
Well, check it out, keep, let us know. Okay, good, thank you.
Would you like me to do a formal memo or just?
Well, we all know what this pertains to, I don't know.
Formal memo, okay.
Do we, was that a yes?
Yes.
You got anything else, David?
Nope, that's it.
Anybody have anything for David? Where do we leave, where, where are we on that, our favorite house over there on?
Granada.
Granada.
To my knowledge, it's still being, they're, they're being fined by the county is my understanding. And at some point, the county can.
How long does this go before something else has, happens?
I guess, I mean, I can, if you want me to reach out to county code enforcement to see what their process is because I, I'm, I'm assuming that at this point, it has to be over thousands of dollars that are being.
I would think.
So the, it might just, it's probably not in their wheelhouse because, I mean, they'll have to go through formal foreclosure is what will have to happen before they can actually do something about it. Unless it's determined, unless they make some determination that it's a health and safety problem.
Okay, I mean, somebody's cutting the lawn, it's been cut again. So some, somebody's maintaining something over there.
David, if it's possible, I'd like you to add, just because it's one of my favorite questions that I get asked. What are we doing? And I keep saying, I don't know, we're doing something.
You know, they're getting fined daily.
It's still there and I tell we get, they're getting fined, but that's not an answer they're looking at.
Understood.
Okay.
One other question for you. Do we have any recourse against homes or condos or apartments that had hail damage months ago and still have boarded up windows?
No.
Because it kind of looks like crap.
Yeah, I, I mean, as, as far as boarded up windows, I don't know that, yeah.
There's no glass, it's, it's wood, it's like you would see in a hurricane's coming.
I can take a closer look at our, at our code enforcement policy. I don't know that that would be, most of our code enforcement stuff has to do with health, safety and, and maintenance. But I'll take a look and see if there's, like I say, if we're, we're making, we're going to be coming to, going to the county for changes here soon. So if that's something that we want to address, just as far as, you know, for quote unquote beautification purposes or for, you know, general aesthetics, I would assume that the, that the condos probably have some language in their condo agreement.
I know there's a couple of Matanzas that have boarded up windows because I pass them every day.
And I can tell you, two of my neighbors on Matanzas, their, their windows are ordered. One of them that you can hardly see has been ordered since middle of April.
I mean, it could be people who went up north and were waiting for the hurricane season to end before they fix it when they come down, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, and like I say, I know that there's, there's properties on Cortez. I know there's one near, near my residence that, that seems to have, you know, window and door protection up six months out of the year. So, I mean, if that's something that the board doesn't want to, to see occurring throughout the district, we can definitely make some changes so that that's not permissible. You know, we could say that, you know, you can, you can put those up and after hurricane season ends, they have to come down within X number of days. But I don't think there's anything on our books that we're, in our.
I mean, I don't think it's particularly attractive. I don't think it does anything for the positive for the district. So I would be in favor of coming up with something.
All right, I'll, I'll take a look at what we currently have and, and if there's, if we want to make that change, I can put something in there and you guys can vote on it.
But Mike, I can tell you, my two neighbors want it up more than we want it. You know.
That could be, again.
They're, they're frustrated, very frustrated. And it's a big company, it's a big glass and beer company and they're just so far behind in getting the glass. Because if it's special glass, it's still waiting to get here and then they're backed up. So I, I think we got to do it on a case by, oh, case basis. But what Ray's talking about is the shutters, that should be, we shouldn't allow that, something like that. But I can tell you, my two neighbors want their windows put in.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. And like I say, that, anything, like I say, even if we did have a policy or adopted a policy, that would be, those would be circumstances where they could say, look, I've got it on order. You know, I've taken every reasonable step to, to correct the situation and we wouldn't be able to do anything about that.
And I don't know if this is a question for you or Bob, what, what is a, a policy on signs on lawns? Do we, do we have a, a good policy?
Yeah, there's a, well, there's a big difference. I mean, we do have a policy, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I'll, I'll get an answer.
Yeah. You can't put what? You can put them, can you put them on the, on your own lawn? Oh, I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't have done.
Ray, what signs are you talking about? Are you talking about?
I'm getting tired of seeing political signs up when the, when the race was over in two thousand and twenty.
But you can't, you can't, you can't tell them they can't put stuff up in their personal yard.
That's correct. That's correct. If it's in our right of way, we, we have the right.
The right of way is one thing, but you can't in their yard.
Right.
Because there's people over on Granada that's.
Can we do something about that?
I can check, but I think there's also, I think there's county regulations regarding signs as well. So, but I can, I mean, I can take a look into it, but they probably know more than I do off the top of their head. But as far as what we control, my recollection is, is only in the right of ways that we could do anything about. But I believe that there are county ordinances regarding signs, you know, that you can put in your yard.
I mean, I think that we're talking about the same house on Granada, it's like.
He's got fifteen of them. It's, he's got several flags in his yard along with signs.
I, I believe the county is, I'm sorry, Bob Brumfield, Supervisor Rhodes and Drainage, I believe the county's already addressed that and there's not really anything they can do.
I don't think there is either.
But I can, I can double check.
Can we do something as a district?
No, we don't.
Yeah, not with, yeah, not with what we have currently, not with what we currently have in place is my knowledge. But I, I mean, I'll look to verify, but based on what my recollection is, I don't think there is other than the right of way.
Yeah, that protective yard made the newspaper as flags flying over Granada.
Yes. Yeah.
Six flags flying over Granada, it made the, oh, the notes where people can write in, it was in there.
Yeah, and I'm assuming that they couldn't do anything about it, the county, because they complained. So it's in his yard, all the way up by his house, so.
Well, if you could just double check to make sure we can't do anything about it.
I could ask too, let's say a builder has a vacant lot, they can put a for sale sign up on the lot as long as it's not in the right of way. And the reason I ask is, is the bondholder was asking about doing that and putting them up for their lots, which would be a bunch of for sale signs going up, that might be good.
Yeah, yeah, as long as it's out of the right of way or the areas we maintain, we don't really have any ability to address a sign issue.
Thank you. Anything else, David? Any public comments? General Manager.
Sure, I'll start. Our fifty thousand dollar kitchen rooftop air conditioning unit has been delivered and I'll be working with Mike. There's a temporary unit up there that we had installed that offered summer relief, but it's, it's not going to handle the summer heat for an extended period. I'm going to have to work with Mike because it may be with it, we have to close the kitchen for a day. Some day that, you know, we're looking at weekends right now or a Monday because they are going to be doing, you know, in their duck work and going into the roof and adding that. But I'll be getting with Mike after the meeting today to see when we can minimize the disruption. But there will be some disruption to that kitchen interior due to the duck work and we'll have roughers up there.
Would it be cost effective to open the snack bar?
No, maybe, that's what I'll talk to Mike about. And there's a couple of minor roofing issues there that while we have the roofer up there, we're going to try to get them to address.
Is this one, you think one day or is it going to be more than one day?
One day. And we, we probably can work on the weekends up on the roof and try to minimize any damage, you know, outside there. But it looks like it's going to be a full day of actual work inside the building in the kitchen.
All right, so you guys will decide the date? Okay.
All the insurance submittals from the hailstorm have been made. We're waiting to hear back from them just on the business lost and their final determination on that. The other amounts have been settled. They have just recently sent us their bidding requirements, what they like to see legally when those projects go out. And we didn't want to put them out to bid and then all of a sudden they had a T we needed, a cross or an I, and they'd come back on the payout for it. So the next thirty days, we'll have to bring some bid specs forwards in those projects. And from the last meeting, I told you that damage approaches a million dollars. So there's going to be a lot of work going on.
Do you have any idea yet how much it's going to cost us out of pocket? Approximately?
Approximately, on the insurance side in that, four to five thousand dollars. We have a number of outbuildings and bathrooms that had minor damage that were not on our insurance list. I'm not sure why, they just weren't added when they were constructed. But while we have the contractors in there and looking at it, we're going to get bid staff that work done and hopefully it'll be minimal.
Okay. You'll have that for us soon or next, next meeting?
Should have it, should be done any day.
Okay, good.
And also had a flyer for the golf tournament November fourth. Advent will be doing their annual tournament and that funding is for their fitness center and some other projects that they're working on. It's going to be a big deal, they have sixty-nine golfers right now and same thing, they're, they're looking at having thirty to forty MVPs, All-Stars. Last time they all had, we all knew, had the voice of the Mets, the retired announcer had been there almost thirty years. They'll have a, a large line of people there and we're working with them to some of the nuts and bolts, just to make sure everything goes off well. And I really don't look at it as a golf tournament, I look at it as a marketing opportunity and for Shunt, Sun and Lake to really shine because we'll get good press coverage from this and we'll be inviting Scott and the state rep and the state senator to come in and, you know, do a photo op and just a welcome to Highlands County also and publicize a little better for the residents because when they all come into the clubhouse and have breakfast in the morning, some of them might want to come in and press the flesh and meet these people or when they're going by their houses in the back. So we're looking forward to it, hopefully it'll be a great event and it won't rain like last year.
Yeah.
Also coming up at our first meeting in September, that'll be our tentative budget adoption. And would also be the public hearing for our utility rate case that we've been discussing. That'll all be advertised in the paper, it'll go on our website, it'll also go out to the residents in an email blast. And we're going to bring some fees in there with those rates too. And one thing, we have a rate sheet and we're charging residents four hundred dollars if we go out and change their sewer pump out on those small stations. The pumps are now costing us five hundred and twenty-five dollars and there's no labor charge associated with it. So it, it, it's a big deal because the residents are kind of used to calling us and, and getting the deal of it being done. And sometimes they've got involved in things on private property, they probably. And sometimes they've got involved in things on private property they probably shouldn't. But we'll go ahead, too, and put together a brochure like they did with code enforcement that we can hand to people and say, Here's some tips on how to maintain your system. Here's a list of plumbers that can work on them, and here's our new rate sheet. And actually, by the time you look at calling us, you may want to call a plumber because we aren't going to be any cheaper. We'll be adding what it costs us to send the people out there and a labor charge in a truck, just like the private sector would. And there's also a article I put in there, too. The county's asked me to join their Planning and Zoning Commission Board of Adjustment. It's a couple of hours, starting at 3 o'clock once a month. I served on this commission previously years ago. One of their longtime members retired, so they asked me if I'd take it up. It's interesting because you can see all the planning and zoning, the issues that come up with them, but also it's good to bring that information back. And it's also just working with the county staff on a regular basis, which I think can only benefit us. Also put a note up there, too. Got some information. There's a Rural Infrastructure Fund. And same thing, it's federal and state dollar pass through. And for rural counties, which Highlands County is one, they have a $25 million pot, and it's for infrastructure improvements. So I'll be going to that meeting September 12th and see if we can get a slice of that pie, maybe for roads, maybe for utilities, maybe for stormwater drainage, but we're certainly going to give it a try.
Excellent.
And also, there is a new president and CEO for Advent Health Sebring. His recent retirement, Jason Dunkle's there. And he'll he'll be at the golf tournament and also be some other opportunities for you folks to meet him. But very accomplished professional, big background in healthcare in Florida, and just a nice guy, solid guy, and I think going to be a big addition to the community.
Good.
I have a few other things, but I'll I'll also put the hat on for the utility staff report today. We had eight new connections for water and wastewater. We're actually running about 10 a month right now, and we're having to order meters left and right. We had a number of permits that came in this last week, and a check came in to cover those for $78,000. So bringing that connection fee up is a big help on the utility side. And also, you know, with meter equivalents, brought that up. So he, it's kind of important. We had Alan Slater come in. Rural Waters provides circuit riders, and they came in. And we recently hired Dustin Paxton as a licensed wastewater treatment plant operator. So they had a walk around of all our plants, you know, and evaluate what we can do, changes that we could make, efficiencies we can make in processing. And it's really just to make it a better place and hopefully save some money. But in there, too, we had an increase from our for our chlorine chemicals, which we use for the water and the wastewater. And, you know, when you look at the overall percentage, they've had pushing 100% of materials on one side. It's going to hit us for about 19% right now. There there, we piggybacked that contract. It's about the lowest price you could get, good supplier. It's going to end up costing us eight, maybe $10,000 if it keeps going up. But also put in there, too, things important. Mater Electric, we buy a lot of pumps from them, parts, panels. And they're going to come in and run a class for our operators on control panels, how they work, parts. And we're also going to invite all our neighboring utilities, Sebron, Avron Park, excuse me, Spring Lake Improvement District and Lake Placid. And we're going to hold it over at the restaurant, and they're coming in to do it. There's no additional charge for more people. So again, we're going to try to work with them, educate our staff, get some more knowledge out there. And we'll also be sending two of them in October to Melbourne. The class is free on the SCADA system, our operational instrumentation. It's all automated. If there's any alarms, it's basically ported to our cell phones. So we know what's going on, and we don't have to wait for a call out or that type of thing. But we'll be sending two people over there. And again, that's just to up the knowledge base on the staff, make it more efficient. The other cat is you need more people or you need technology. And we have the SCADA system in place. So get the folks trained and familiar with it. And again, it's nice because those alarms go right to their cell phones. And there's a couple of pictures in there, and there was some work done. It cost $16,000 to reline the Woods and Water Lift Station. And basically, there was a hole in the side of it that had sprung. So when the groundwater would come up, it was just like a faucet of water running in there, which isn't good for the pumps. But that that was repaired. But the other picture you see shows the control panel for that station, and you see it has a nice list to it. Is that water poured into the lift station that was taking soil with it? So it was actually collapsing, and we'll have to pick that up and put some more support on it and straighten it out. But the folks at Tangle would appreciate it. And right now, we have two ongoing projects. We have new pumps being installed at the lift station that serves the elementary school. Have new rails, new bases, and new pumps put in that station. And there's also a new generator being installed. That's a long term project. It's been approved previously by the board. And we're putting the generator in. We're putting it on a new slab and and putting a little retaining wall because right now it just drops off. You can't pull a truck in there. You can't work or come in the backside. So there's some site improvements that are going along with that. And we'll be making some improvements all to the entry fences because you can't really shut them securely. So a lot going on in the utility world.
Any questions? Comments from the public? Road and Road and Drainage. Mr. Bob.
Morning, everybody. Bob Brumfield, Road and Drainage Supervisor.
Good morning.
I just gave you all a picture of our newest piece of equipment we ordered last October. I think we got it on Tuesday. It's a 32 horsepower articulating compact lightweight tractor. That's an edging attachment that we, the reason that we ordered that was to hopefully cut back on manpower edging the the roads and sidewalks around the district. We haven't really put it to good use yet, but we're still learning how to operate it, and and we've used it a little in few little areas, and it seems like it's working pretty well. Give you an update on the dog park. It's scheduled to be done last week of October. That's the soonest they can get it on their books. They do have a big project the first three weeks of October. If that somehow moves or changes, then we can get bumped up a little bit. We trimmed the palm trees on Woods and Irons this past week, so they they look a lot better. They're not so scraggly looking. We have 56 recycle bins at our shop right now. I've contacted Bob Diefendorf with the County Solid Waste. Got his name to the engineering department, and he's told me that he's going to make arrangements with Waste Connections to have them picked up. Haven't heard back from him yet, but he assured me they would get them. The sign, South Sign on Schumacher, it's got a couple of busted letters from the hail. I've contacted the sign company. He's working on an estimate for us right now. Haven't heard back from him yet. That's about all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? I got a couple. The, I guess it was mentioned at the last meeting about ditch cutting.
Yeah, we mowed that ditch behind Mr. Sirwass's house. We did that this past week. That's been done.
Is that is that a problem throughout the district, though, or is just that one isolated case?
That one is just really steep sided, and there's not much room between the the houses. There's fences, and there are a lot of obstacles down through there. So we use our remote control mower for that. Unfortunately, our operator had COVID a couple of weeks ago. So it put us back about a week of mowing time, but we will be on that a regular basis and not let it get high enough where he complains about it.
Okay, so you think we're up to date on it now?
Yes, we are.
On the dog park, closure should, is that going to be closed for a couple of days to do this?
It probably will take them a couple of days. Yeah.
You should probably try and zero in on how many days and then send out an email blast saying the dog park will be closed
Yep.
due to expansion or construction, however you want to order.
Okay.
And then I would also appreciate if you would send out another email blast on the garbage cans.
Okay.
Just to see if anybody, you know, we missed a few people the first time.
I've gotten a lot of people, a lot of emails from people up north that ask if we'll still be doing it when they come down, and that I've emailed them back and assured them that they will pick them up when they get back. And so there's no problem with that.
Okay. And then it was also mentioned, I guess, last by Mr. Smurvis at the last meeting about that we don't enforce the garbage can rule as well as he perhaps thinks we should be.
Well, that's that's.
Am I not saying that correctly?
No, you're you're right. It just doesn't, yeah, it doesn't surprise me.
That is a tough issue. We have a lot of, and and I've talked to Mr. Sirwass about that before. And he was under the impression that everybody had a garage, and everybody should keep their their bins in the garages. Well, if you go look on any of the streets, Ponce León, Granada, you'll see ten plexes, quadplexes, just a bunch of multiplexes, places upstairs, downstairs, that there's no way that somebody's going to get their trash can upstairs to hide it. So if they put it on the side of the building, that's acceptable with us. It's been in effect since when we first started this. We got to get, we we contacted the county before they started the big trash can because we knew that that was going to be a problem.
So you feel pretty good about?
Bob, aren't they supposed to put a fence up or something, not just on the side of the building?
Well, there are places where, like, for example, the ten plexes over here on Granada, there's two or three of them. Now, they have the two end part people are they're on their own, you know, everybody's putting their cans on the side. Some of them are putting them in the front. If you look at the place over on Villa Bella that's got the upstairs downstairs, that they have cans lined up down the side of the building. Now, that's, those are all owned by individual people.
I know, but we never mind.
No, say it.
We, when we passed it, they, it wasn't our problem. It's theirs. And a lot of these people had to go out and pay for a fence and hide their their garbage. It's simple as that. We
And and
Did we not say that, or is it just something we don't want to enforce?
Well, we did say that. But with that being said, the people didn't request these cans. They were they were put on by the county. The county refuses to pick up anything that's not in the can. And so there, we're we're making people pay to put, and and this is
Yeah, that's the way it works.
We've had conversations with this for months. Mike was involved, Tanya was involved. The county commissioner was involved, the the Waste Connection people. And they basically said, Well, it's too bad. You know, if people can't afford to have a little fence or something put up, and then we came up with the plan of just putting them on the side. If they're in front of the of the house or in front of the garage, then we'll address it. If it's down the side of the building, we don't address it.
I know a lot of people and a lot of condo associations spent a lot of money to do what we asked them to do.
Yeah.
And I know the problem on Matanzas and Granada are mostly renters. And you're you're going to tell me that we don't want, don't they pass that on to their renter if they have to do that?
They should, yes.
Okay, then it's maybe, again, life is too simple for me, but I I don't understand.
Do we have a policy?
We do have a policy.
Are we adhering to the policy?
It's got to be out of public view.
Are we, are we adhering to the policy?
As closely as we can, yes.
As closely as we can.
Because that doesn't work that way. If the policy is not right, let's correct the policy. But whatever the policy is, we should be adhering to it.
Yeah, you're you're right. You're absolutely right.
Which is it? I mean, I mean, and I don't know the policy. That's what I'm asking. Is it, does it need to change?
What the, what it says is it has to be out of public view.
Right.
Now, if they put it far enough down the side of their of their house or behind their house, I guess that's out of public view, which doesn't solve the problem. You know, we have people that live in in these places that have the the residents are in their 80s and 90s. They have a hard time pulling it down the driveway to the road. And and, you know, we
I I understand.
It's almost an impossible situation.
You know, nothing, nothing ever works 100%.
Correct.
But it doesn't sound like we're in the 90s yet.
Well, we, I would say we're in the 90s. There there, there are, there are a few places that
Not on Matanzas, we're not.
Can you look at the policy and come back and make recommendations on something that we could live with?
Sure.
And Bob, I I personally don't, but it's unfair to everybody, and that's what I hear from. They spent, a lot of people spent money to put up a fence like we asked them to do or do it. And then the ones who, I guess, don't want to follow rules, they just do it, and they got all kinds of excuses. I mean, I I maybe that's what Supervisor Brooks is trying to get at. But it's just not fair to the people who have spent money to do what we asked them to do, and we let everybody else skate.
So David, David, I have a question for you. I know we're not going by the policy, and Michael's right here. People have spent a lot of money. So if Bob sends them a letter and they don't, they don't put a put a fence up, what it is, is is what we come up with is to put a fence to block it because it you the rule is you can't see it. Well, if it's on the side of the house, you can see it. Come on.
Yeah.
All right. So if Bob sends letters to these people that that don't have a pad or don't have a a fence, can we start fining them?
Yes, we can.
Well, I'm asking, no, I want David to.
If they're in violation of the policy or if they're in violation of the ordinance, we can absolutely issue a notice or a citation.
But in the ordinance, did we say a fence?
That's what I'm literally, I'm looking at them right now to see what.
Out of public view.
Well, I
Totally different thing.
Yes, well. Yeah, yeah, we did. Well, we did.
Let's go back and look at it and come back to us and say, This is what it is, and this is what we need to do to it. Or come back and say, this is what it is. It's good. Are you guys okay with it?
Well, the way it's stated is it's got to be out of public view until prior hour, 12 hours prior to pickup. That's the way it's stated.
Okay, so there's nothing about a fence?
There's nothing that requires a fence. If they can pull it in their in their garage, if they can pull it behind some shrubs, if they can get it out of public view, then it's legal.
Thank you.
But the policy is you can't see it.
Public view, you know, how do you interpret that? So you walk around behind the house, you can see it.
I mean, we've been, you and I have been fighting for a long time.
The way that we
Here's the problem. If you can see it, it's wrong, right?
If we interpret it for driving down the road, if you can see it.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
Let's try one more time.
And you're right, Mr. Brooks. We are, there are places that are not in compliance.
Okay. Well, I mean, according to this report, there's at least 30 of them last in the month of July, right?
Those are the ones we sent notices to, yes.
So I know there's people that are not in compliance. It's on the report. All I'm saying is, let's check and see what it says. Make sure we all agree with it, and then enforce it, period. Very simple.
And but, okay, that's what the
Bob, if you got to say it's got to be so much off the curve, you know, figure out something, 75 feet off off the street. Anything beyond that is okay. Figure out a way to get around it. There's always a way.
The ordinance does need to be changed because when it was written, we didn't have these big cans. There was no, there was no problem with trash. We had no violations with trash before.
So David?
Zero.
All right. David, there's another change we need.
Gotcha.
Okay. Anything else, Bob? Okay, thank you, Bob. Bob? Bob to Bob.
Oh, just the supervisors just let you know. I was checking, and we don't have anything on signs on public property. The county has language that says the signs, no signs intended to be read from off premises. So if you if you don't like signs in somebody's yard, call the county code enforcement, and they'll have to make the determination. But we, there's nothing we can do. If it's not in our right of way, we can't do anything about it. Call the county.
Okay. Well, thank you for checking. Yes, sir.
Bob Hiltz, Code Enforcement and Security. We did 153 write-up warnings with 153 served over the month. By the way, we did pick up 31 signs out of the right of way. And we did 91 calls for service on security with 3,978 miles, and we did 753 watch orders.
This, the signs that you're picking up in the right of way, is that in private property or in front of houses?
Yes. Not only, not only in these companies that are doing this, they're putting them by stop signs and, you know, you've seen it.
But I'm saying is, if the household is doing it, shouldn't we be citing them?
No, like I said, there's nothing in our, there's nothing in our, currently, there's nothing in there that says that we can do anything about that other than remove them. Because they're on our property. But that's something, like I say, in the changes that we're making, you know, we can start issuing a notice and saying, hey, we're not going to allow any signs of, or any signs in our right of way. All the, and the other thing that I discovered is they are signs, if they're on the, on private property, they have to be within, they have to, they've got a 15-foot setback from the property line. So, but once again, county enforces that, not us.
It, I have a question.
Sure.
Over. It's not a sign issue, but the rods that are over on.
Myrtle Beach?
Yes.
Yeah, we're working on those right now.
Okay, because they, I had my car in there yesterday and that's.
Yeah.
And on that one curve where all the flags and stuff are?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we're working on that.
Thank you.
Great. Did you find out about those?
That's exactly, yeah, those metal rods, that's, yeah, we're working on that right now.
Any other, I got a question. I'm just curious on this. I, I love to read the security report. But this was very interesting. You had two complaints by the same caller and the same security officer on two different dates pertaining to an open door address which was the same.
Yes.
I'm confused.
Very frequently with the snowbirds that are gone now, our watch order guy will find an open door or an unlocked door where someone else comes and does work at your house and when they leave, they don't lock it. Well, the next time our watch order guy comes through, he finds the door open again.
Oh, so that's what we think it was because it's just, it was, one was on July the first, one was on July the 10th.
Yeah, I'm sure it's the same thing. I'm sure, I'm sure, I, I bet, is the address on Angelo Circle?
No.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't going to tell you the address.
Oh, it's on Sunrise?
Yeah. Yeah. Do we ever call the owner and say, whoever's watching your house is sloppy?
It's the people doing the work and they have somebody coming in and working or whatever, and then they're, they never lock the door when they leave.
Okay. As long as we're in good shape. I was just, it just looked funny when I, when I saw it.
Yes, okay. And I do appreciate the board's support and administration's support on this junk deal because that really is a giant pain in the, you know what, and it, and having you put some teeth into it will greatly assist on what we do. Thank you.
On the, on the, I do have one last, who's doing the brochure? That brochure you guys are working out?
Uh, me and Bob and I are both doing it.
Okay, are we, are we going to wait to, to have a few of these other answers before we print that brochure? Or are we just going to go with what we got?
I think we're pretty close to, aren't we pretty close to completion on that, Bob? Chris?
I mean, because we were talking at one point that there may be additional information, we might have to change.
Yep.
The size of it.
We may, yeah, may change the size of it or have one for garbage and, you know, a special one for garbage because it causes so many issues.
Yeah, I mean, with this dumping, all these things that we're considering are important enough, I think, to put in there.
Okay.
So I would rather have you slow down on, on the printing, the brochure, until we have a really all-inclusive one and we only have to do it one time and it'll last for a while. So I'll let you guys, you and Chris and.
Yeah.
Bob, work on that.
Yeah, I'm great with that.
If it takes a couple of months, that's fine.
And Bob, while you're there, have you introduced Miguel?
Yeah, last, last meeting I did.
I couldn't remember, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. Also?
Any other questions, Bob? Thank you. Any, uh, public comments? Thank you. Community Services.
Right, right, right.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, Pat. I didn't see you.
Pat Holmes, resident. I've been doing a lot of walking lately and there's people that are, the stop signs are not there anymore. They just blow through them. And I think we ought to have the sheriff's department come out and start taking a look. It's not just certain streets, it's all of Sun and Lake. And I think we should start ticketing these people for not stopping at stop signs.
Thank you. Yeah, we went through this a couple of years ago. Where we did hire.
The sheriff.
Off-duty policeman, I guess, certain, certain number of hours a month at a reasonable cost at the time. I assumed it worked for a little while, then for some, whatever reason, I can't remember, we did stop doing it.
Yeah, I'll get a, I'll get a current price, but have, have deputies coming in and doing track, traffic enforcement, whether it's on Sun, Sun Lake Boulevard, even though that is a county road.
That's right. It, you know what, the inner streets are really the worst.
Oh, yeah. Backside, I know exactly the path. I saw him, it's funny, he's walking by and I said something to him and the guy blew through a stop sign right when I was saying hi, so.
I mean, it may be something.
I'll get a price and bring him back, but I think especially, you know, you just bring him in on, they have like a minimum shift. I think it's four hours, but two or three times a week and just have him do that, traffic enforcement, it makes a big difference.
Yeah, it might. Okay, thank you, Pat. Community Service and Human Resources.
Good morning, supervisors. Couple of quick updates to the report that was submitted to you. So on the human resources front, we are currently in the midst of onboarding two part-time security guards. Offer letters have been made. We're just working through some of the pre-employment screens and things of that nature. So we expect them to be starting very soon. Also, in addition to that, one of the recreation part-time positions has been offered as well in the same process, so just in the midst of the onboarding process right now. There is also a new vacancy for a utility supervisor. Chris and I are going to work together on that to kind of fill in that space on the org chart and see kind of how that needs to go forward and we will post whatever position is appropriate deemed by Chris. In addition to that, so on the community services front, regarding the playground, obviously you all saw my comments in my staff report. Drew and I met early August with regards to the playground project and we started talking through some of the concerns with the drainage in that area where it's kind of been proposed. One of the things that Drew shared is that he thinks that we may have some potential issues getting permitting for that area. There are also pipes under the ground for drainage that we would have to work around, potentially cut and move in addition to a good amount of fill. So the obvious concern there is, A, whether or not we can even get the permitting to put the playground in that location and B, what are going to be the costs of putting it there. So one space that Drew and I both deemed could be appropriate for a secondary option is actually just over in this area over by the basketball courts. Drew has shared that there's the appropriate drainage already in that location. The square footage is as big, if not more, as the previous location. So in our conversations with Rep Services, who is the firm that is doing this playground project for us, they said that that's, that wouldn't be an issue whatsoever. It's basically a pick it up from this spot and drop it in that spot so we don't completely wash the work that we've done thus far. Drew, anything? Did I miss anything there?
Uh, I think you, I think you covered most of it. Just to clarify a little bit on why I suggested that location. Back when the community center parking was added back in 2010, 2011, we permitted, originally it was going to be pickleball courts and tennis courts in that location, which I guess something changed and everything kind of shifted to keep it all where all the tennis courts are now. So that, I don't think there's any plans to put pickleball courts or anything there now. So we already have impervious area in the pond right adjacent to it already permitted. So it'd be a minor mod to the swift mud permit if, if, if we decided to put it there. That's, that's the main reason I suggested it. It would just be easier to stick it there. But we'd, if, if we want to still use the old location, we can do what we got to do to make it fit. It was additional cost probably more than anything to, to make it go in the original location. But we don't, we don't have to move it. I just wanted to bring that up in case it was a.
Well, the question I would have is, what happens with the swimming pool?
So that's actually one of the other reasons that we chose that location is we, Drew and I actually pulled up the Recreation Master Plan when we were meeting and talking through some of this and looking for a potential secondary location. This would not impact the swimming pool. Now, where the playgrounds exist as of today, yes. That obviously, those would be ripped out because if we chose to move forward with that secondary pool, it would be right slapdab in the middle of the addition. So moving that over towards the basketball courts in that area does not have an effect on what was proposed for the pool.
I like the new location. I, I like the parking. If I was a parent, I could park and watch the children and it's close to the basketball courts. If I was a dad, I could shoot some baskets while my kids were playing.
Correct. And there's also a sidewalk that's already there. So even, you know, if you, if the parking was full up towards the recreation complex and you did have to park towards the community center, it's a very, very short distance as we know, and there's already existing sidewalk to get you there. Something else that I found attractive with that location is in the Recreation Master Plan, something else that was suggested was additional parking that actually runs kind of on the opposite side of where the parking is now, so kind of extends a little bit where the circle is and then, and then down that tree line. So if we were to ever move forward with that additional parking as it was proposed in the Recreation Master Plan, it would be adding additional parking very close in proximity to the playground location there as well.
How many handicap parking places do you have now? Two?
That is a great question. Off the top of my head, I am not sure. I know that it runs down that straight. It's not.
I think it's just two.
No, how many do we have?
Yeah, I'm not sure the exact number because they're, they're right here, but I, I think either two or three. Is it four, Mike? Okay, so approximately four is what Mike is saying.
Four. Where are the other two?
They're right here.
Oh, two right here?
Right here and over there.
Okay. Thank you.
The only thing I would challenge, to be this far along and to all of a sudden realize that our site that we chose is not adequate, I would want us to make sure that we, in the future, have a site preparation on the checklist as to whether it's a viable spot or not.
Sure.
Because we, to be this far along and then all of a sudden we realize that we have an issue is not good.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, outside of the wrong spot and being $200,000 over the original amount that we thought it was going to be, everything's fine.
Yeah.
All right, so overall, is everybody okay with the, the location? Can you give us any kind of an idea what it's going to look like?
Yes, I will. So that was the next part of my update. Earlier this week, Sunday Dickerson and I had another follow-up with Rep Services. What we're working on right now is kind of fine tuning, as I mentioned, the scope. Obviously, what they had given us was far superseded what our budget was. So we outlined in detail for them what our budget was, what we wanted to see. They're making a couple of updates. The biggest issue that we've run into is since we kind of had these initial conversations, the cost of the PIP, which is that pour-in rubber surfacing, has increased substantially. So one of the things that we're looking to do is how do we reduce the overall footprint? Still working within the same budget. I'm not, I'm not coming and saying anything about that. What we're trying to do is reduce the overall footprint of the playground. And one suggestion that was made by Rep Services, which I would very much recommend, is the swing set area that we currently have. Instead of putting that under, doing the PIP, the pour-in rubber surfacing under the swing sets, to go ahead and do a mulch underneath the swing sets, which is not uncommon in, in most playgrounds. And that would reduce the footprint of the pour-in place rubber surfacing, which is honestly one of the largest cost drivers in the entire project. So we had that meeting. He expects to see something, or we expect to see something been next week. So yes, I would, I'm happy to share that so that you guys can kind of lay eyes. He also said that he agrees with the conversation with regards to drainage. He thinks if we have any concerns with drainage, he said that it's very easy for him to pop it on to kind of an aerial map as he's done before, to show it in this location so that we can kind of see what that might look like.
So you can keep this within the 550?
That's what I told him. And, and 550 includes everything.
I don't want to keep it at the extent of shortchanging ourselves and saying two years from now, we're not very happy.
No, that's not the case at all, which is exactly why I'm asking or suggesting that instead of doing pour-in place for the entire square footage, that we consider doing that mulch area because I don't want to shortchange it either and I definitely don't want to start pulling equipment. That's the last thing that I want to do. So if I can keep the equipment so that the kids have somewhere to play at the expense of maybe putting some mulch under the swings and keeping the pour-in place rubber surfacing under all the structures, then I think that that's a really good alternative to, like I said, pulling, pulling shade, which we know we don't want to do, or pulling structures, which I really am, am not wanting to do either.
Okay, assuming that the location's good, the draft of it is good, looks, everything looks good. What is the timing going to be to, best of your knowledge?
So as I mentioned in my staff report, we're going to be looking at completion date of approximately April or May of next year.
With a start date of?
With a start date. And now I didn't, I didn't write that one down. I want to say that we had talked about if we could get approval of some of the drafts, basically, kind of give them the go-ahead and start working forward in September or October, then we would be looking at that timeline.
Okay. Yeah, but the, yeah, I think the actual time of construction would be what period of time?
I have the full timeline in my office. I do not have it with me and I'm happy to send that in an email, if that's okay. Because I know that Sunday and I have been working on kind of what that might look like. So if that's okay, I'll, I'll shoot that over in an email.
And again, 550, did that include getting rid of the old one?
It does.
Okay.
It does. And that's, so that includes some of those unseen costs, so the demolition of what is currently there. It includes some fencing. It includes a project contingency, which will probably be completely eaten up and we can probably rename that to fill or some of the fun, fun stuff that would go along there. But that, that's, that was the all-in budget. So that's not a, 550 is not a budget for playground equipment. I can tell you that. That's a, that is the project in totality is what he was given, which is why we're continuing to fine tune.
I have, I have just a couple of questions. I just found out, I thought our budget went to 550 because of where it was and fencing and so on and so forth. But apparently our budget now is 550.
No, no, 350.
Our budget is 350 on a.
Yeah, but we're going to spend $550,000.
We're getting $200,000 in grant funding.
I understand that.
Okay.
But we, originally, we started at.
350.
Yeah.
Thinking that it would go down because.
Yeah, okay, but that's fine. I mean, but I just, I hope we learn from this with contingencies and all this stuff when we start talking about a pool and stuff.
It's exactly the same.
Because we have spent, I mean, it doesn't make any difference, but that's a lot of money for, for the amount of children we have here, but we need it.
There's, there's no change to the, what was proposed in the beginning. It's just that we're getting $200,000 in grant money.
Right.
Because of what, what we're doing.
But, but Greg, my, my thoughts, we're, we're going to get $200,000 and, and the budget could be cut.
And reduce to 350. I don't think that's what we were talking about though.
Well, that's, that's probably bad on me because that's what I thought it might be, but. And what, what's the update on the pickleball? Is that being worked on?
Yes, yep. So one of the things that I'm working on with Sunday as well is end of the year, kind of an overall look at recreation budget and what money is in there to make some of those improvements that we talked about. That was, that was the plan. So like we said, similar to like it's been expressed with utilities, the recreation budget, we try and stay very, very tight throughout the year in the instance that something happens with the pool or any of the facilities that we oversee in case there's any kind of major expense. One of the things that we had talked about, hopefully fitting into our repair and maintenance budget, was some of the tables that needed to be replaced that were there. So those updates that we talked about, we're very much on track with that.
Does that include the shade?
The, the drawl shade?
The shade for the pickleball area. Wasn't that one of the recommendations?
No, so we had a, there was a shade that they had requested that was inside of the pavilion, almost like a drawl shade like you would see on a patio or a porch. Okay, and then an umbrella, like a table with an umbrella to go on one of the far pads. Was what was in that report, but very much on track for that.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, I have a question for you. We talked about solar for, for our pool area here. Have you got any quotes? I mean, I talked to two or three solar companies and told them to go see you.
Right. We had one of the companies came in, we gave them the electric bill and we have another company, Universal, that's going to be here next week and talk about solar for the pool and also this building. So they're going to put some proposals together. We provided them the electric bills for reference so they could generate their savings. And one of the reasons the interest is starting to peak is you get fed and so pay about 30% of your project cost.
Right, right. They just moved it to 30%. It was 26 before. Now, my question, how much is the electric bill for the pool in here? Does anybody know?
I didn't look at it that closely, Mike. I have it back in my office.
Okay, can I touch?
It, it goes up significantly in the winter.
Yeah.
Anything else for Ariel?
Yes, so just one last thing. I wanted to let you know that we are still working with Fishlapped on the website. We finished the site mapping, which was a. We finished the site mapping, which was about a four-hour-long meeting that we had with Fish Slapped. Everything's looking great. They're putting together, they're using that site map to kind of start building some stuff out, looking like we're still on track for October 1. And obviously, once we have a nice draft of sorts, we'll make sure that you guys see that. Last thing that I have is with regards to the newsletter, looking for, I guess, a consensus at this point, the newsletter that was discussed either at the last meeting or the meeting before, the 11 by 17, we are slated for this first newsletter to go out in September. So if we are to make that, obviously, I need to know if there were overall a consensus that yes, we were happy with that and we want to move forward with what was laid out, or?
Chris and I had?
President Brooks is shaking his head no, so I need some direction there so that I can make those changes, because if I'm to get this out by September, I need to be able to start working on the content soon.
Chris and I had a brief conversation yesterday about this. I mean, I know we're shorthanded, so everybody's kind of stretched. My opinion would be, let's get the website fixed first.
Okay.
And then we can turn our attention to the newsletter.
Okay, I'm totally.
I just don't think we're up to staff that we can do everything that we want to all at the same time. So that was my recommendation. I think the website's more important than the newsletter at this point.
I would agree.
So that's my recommendation. If you guys are okay with it?
So just for clarification, then the direction is that with regards to these quarterly newsletters, we will skip the September edition as of now and pick up in December would be the next quarterly newsletter.
We're going to at least wait till then. Let's get the website under our belt, get that correct, and then we'll attack the next problem.
Great.
Just use your email blast like you have been.
Sure.
Been much more effective with getting the news out as far as these board meetings are concerned. I've heard a lot of people say, you know, they like the fact that you're putting in the topics that were going to be discussed, so people know what they're coming to hear.
Thank you.
Anything else for Ariel? Any questions, comments from the public? Thank you. Bob, I had one thing I forgot to ask you about, the broken cement on Matanzas, where the dirt road is. You know, the dirt road that we put in to go to the golf course? Have you had a chance to look at that yet?
Yes, I did. That's, I don't know if it was caused by us or if it's just because that's such a wet side, the sides of the road are just cracking.
Yeah.
And it's not, I don't think it's because the trucks driving in to do that road. What it looks like to me, it's just normal.
No, no. Can we fix it?
Well, the road needs to be repaved to fix it because it's a long stretch. It's not just that spot right there, there's cracks all the way down through Matanzas.
Well, if it's going to be more than, I don't know, if it's going to be that much, if you think, then get together with Drew and let's make sure it's on the plan to be done with the fall, with the budget that we're currently working on.
Okay, very good.
I mean, if we don't have the money right now, that's fine, but let's get it on the list. The other thing we may want to consider, do you want to take that dirt road and gravel it or something? I mean, it looks?
I thought we gravelled it already.
It does have gravel on it, but it definitely needs some work.
Maybe we have to put more gravel on it to make it look halfway decent. Right now, to me, it looks like a dirt road.
And I also?
Originally it was gravel.
I got a quote for redoing that little hedge that was down through there that got hit by the hail. Most of the plants died. It's on between the road and the triplex there. We had originally put in a little hedge and it just got destroyed by the hailstorm. So I've got another price on putting that in. So we'll be redoing that planting there as well.
Oh, that's great.
And then when we do that, we'll get rid of the weeds and things that are growing on the road and look at maybe.
Take a look and maybe get some more gravel on there and putting the cement on in the fall.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to, we're going to do, before we get to golf, we're going to have Mr. Hurley give us an update on his restaurant committee.
We have met three times, twice, I'm sorry.
Mike, bro.
Sorry about that. We've met twice. I gave you a letter of who's on the committee and what we've talked about. We talked, I've talked to Mike actually weekly now. We had, I mean, we're a long way off before it's, I can tell you it's good, but there are improvements. I'm really, like Sandra, what we're pushing for is what we told them what we want, is we want good service and good food. And that's what the board is looking for. They also want to keep the restaurant as a restaurant, not a pub. Okay, and everybody who I've talked to have all said the same thing, they want a restaurant, not a pub. I've met with Sandra a few times. She's going to do training on Monday nights for four staff every other Monday night to get her people prepared. And we explained to them, this is what we need, service and food. We also talked about name tags of who does what, and the letter I gave you, you can read it, read what we're asking for. Mike has been really good. Mike has hired a new chef. I haven't met him yet. I hear good things about him, and we do understand a lot of his problems are chef. But a lot of the other problems were service and food quality. The food quality, I've got four or five complaints, I've got a couple from even board members here, and I appreciate that. And every complaint that comes in, we address on those Mondays that we meet, and I will keep addressing them. So we've only met twice, so, I mean, we're a long way off right now. So I don't know if you guys got any, you know, opinions on how I should be doing it or what I should look for, you know, but I think hiring a chef is going to be big. Michael's hired some other staffing staff. He's also designated people to be in charge of, there'll be someone there as an assistant manager or whatever, and we asked that. We want someone that, if there are complaints to go to. All right, anything else? You guys got any questions?
I'm just, I understand what you're doing, but Mike, you weren't aware that we wanted service and food before? I mean, okay, never mind.
Well, that's what we're stressing, Michael.
Okay.
Okay, you know, and I think Michael's addressing it. I think his employees are aware of it. I mean, you know, I've been to meetings, I've also had calls from you guys saying what's wrong, and everything that's called in to me or Linda Camp, which Linda Camp's been a great help for me, anything that we get, we address directly to Mike and Mike's trying to fix it. So I think with the new chef, I think, and I pray, that this is going to work, because I did explain on Michael too, if this doesn't work, things will change. Thank you.
Oh, you didn't know that?
Any questions from Mr. Hurley, from the public? Okay, golf.
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 This is staff report.
No, this is the golf report. This is the last one, then we're done.
Golf report.
Golf report.
Great, great. That's fine. Golf report.
Good morning, supervisors. Jimmy Murphy, golf course superintendent. Tried to give you guys in my written report, update. Mainline is done, holes two through nine. Holes two through, or four through eight are completed. We're rolling them in. Nine should be starting to get rolled in today, and so now we're working our way back from holes three to two, and should be pretty close by the end of next week with those as well. So that'll leave us one in the driving range before we cross over. So we're trying to get those deadlines, get all this side of the road done prior to the end of the month. I met with Carl on Friday. St. John's is wrapping up and Riviera is wrapping up, so he's going to try to get a good push on the first of the week in September and try to get a few more people in and bring another machine in to start pulling in laterals. And mainline shouldn't take long on the backside, but he feels we're still on schedule for what we discussed about, so.
Do you feel you're on schedule?
We're close. I mean, all the mainlines in, the laterals, I mean, he feels good about it. I mean, he, you know, he's the one that says if he's got to do the push, he'll bring in the push if he starts getting nervous about it, but he feels like he can still get it done. Probably the hardest part's going to be tying into the pump station and bringing that 16-inch around the pond and stuff, but that's going to probably take three to four days.
I haven't been out there in a while. Have you gotten all the sod that you need?
We haven't started on sod yet because we've been fighting irrigation with hydraulics. We had to put a new hydraulic pump on Turtle Run, did that Monday. The thing right now is there's some areas, now that I'm completed, it's fine, but it's just like what Mr. Holmes was asking this morning about Turtle Run pump running all day. I thought right now the only way I can water on holes four through nine is with the Turtle pump, so we're going to hear that pump running all day, and the further we get into it, the longer it's going to run. So I start losing my windows as we get closer on the back. That's why I wanted to meet with Carl and see if there was any way that we could get tied into the pump station, but regardless, we're going to lose water. So that's kind of the reason why I haven't really ordered any sod yet, because it's going to be additional watering. I'm going to.
I read here where you said it made sense, you don't want to put sod down, I not get it.
I got pricing on the behemoth, if you're talking about like the behemoth behind the house.
You know, the general side and the fairways, because we looked at that.
Yes, sir. So I got pricing on behemoth sod, it's $1,500, basically a truckload, which is 16 pallets of sod. Again, the thing is, is when I start laying sod, I'm going to be pulling away from my mowers as well, because that's the people that mow for us. We got basically two or three labors that can lay sod. So if we wanted to get somebody to lay it, it would be more money. But the game plan is to start getting, either go get five or six loads ourselves and start laying, and we're getting done on like Wednesdays, Thursdays with roughs, and then start laying that behemoth coming around for what we've completed already, and then have a week of Bermuda as well. We do have some Bermuda areas that we need to fix as well.
Is this sod in this $2.2 million, or is that's all involved in that?
In the sod work?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
In the $2.2 million, okay. And hydraulic pump, where would that come from? Was that capital?
That came out of our budget.
Your budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
So like right now, we're at 904,000. Basically, almost all the parts are paid for now. We just, the 258 is Carl's, that was his draw, his mobilization.
Is all the material on hand to finish this project?
Yes.
So we're running on the $2 million then, right?
Well, you're halfway through the job and you're at 900,000. So you're halfway through, basically through the job and you're at 900,000, so.
So we're in a position that you can buy more sod and do what you need to do to fix it, right?
Yes, sir. I just, I mean, it's just manpower. I mean, the only other thing I could do is get day labors in here and try to get it done. I don't even know whether we have a day labor service around here or not.
We do.
Okay.
I guess the only thing I would be concerned about is missing the growth, growing period.
Well, keep in mind that the behemoth is not irrigated, so we're going to have to have a man out there when the water tanker watering it in or pray for rain. So it's not, like I said, it's not irrigated. Bermuda, yes, sir, we can definitely irrigate it now. It's definitely on my radar. I mean, Mike and I wrote the other day, I want to get the sod down and get it healed in. I want to get all the heads out of the ground and get so far and then get enough Bermuda to fix around all the heads as well so that it's all done by October. So I'm going to be busy. I mean, it's definitely the game plan is to get it all healed in.
Okay.
Did put sand on the bunkers on 13 and 17 on deer. 16 again, that's why I don't want to fill it yet, because I got to get Bermuda on it and then bring the fill in. We do have, should have enough fill now on hand from the removal on 18 to fill 16.
Okay, I'd worry about that later.
Yes, sir. Took the tree, palm trees down on 11 and four, trying to get those ground. Those were lightning strikes as well. We've had some current other lightning strikes. We've got about four or five more pine trees on deer now to take down. I still got the big tree on four to take down. I think four needs to be replaced. Trying to get some pricing on some pine trees again to try to continue planting in some areas, but four, like I said, that's a big part of that design of that hole, and I think if you remove that tree, it's going to be a wide-open golf hole. I mean, it doesn't matter regardless what you guys, if you want to do it, we'll do it, but I think it's a big part of that hole.
I do, too.
I think it's a big part, but I also think it's dead to the point where it's getting to be dangerous.
I agree.
And needs to come down.
Where you want to put it at? The bad thing is, I'm running out of places. Doc Brown, I'm surprised he hasn't said anything yet about putting stuff over there behind nine, but I really don't have anywhere to put any trees, and that's a giant tree. I can take it down, I'm not worried about that, it's just where am I going to put it all?
What do you mean, the wood?
Don't we take anything to the landfill?
Well, isn't that part of the, I thought it was all part of the cost, they get rid of it, or we get rid of it?
Who's the cost? I'm the one that's going to cut it down.
Oh.
I don't understand. The problem is, you cut it down, you don't know what to do with the tree?
Well, I don't have, I don't have anywhere to take these trees that were taken. I don't have anywhere to take them out back and dump them or burn them, or we don't have a burn pile, we don't have anywhere besides like what Craig said, haul them to a landfill. But we're still in the same scenario.
Right, right. We have a pile out back that we've used over the last few years. We stopped dumping there, and the reason why we stopped dumping there, because we're getting so big. But we could let Jimmy start, you know, because the pile's so big now, we could let Jim take stuff back there. It's a short trip, he doesn't have to, you know, travel a long way and pile it, because we never actually remove what we have there. And I think maybe we should look in to some money maybe next year to go back out there and tip all that up by, you know, by a company. We did get a price from a company a couple of years ago to go and do it, but for some reason, it's, we didn't have any more money, so. So I think if we let Jimmy dump the stuff back there, it will keep the project moving quicker.
Where's this dump site?
By the back pond.
Out back, off of Cortez.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. We used to take trees down and somehow they disappeared.
That's where they were taking them.
Right.
That's where they were taking them.
Right, that's where they were taking.
Taking them where?
Out by the back pond on the back.
Oh, they never taken more premises?
No, sir.
No.
So my question is?
Can we hire somebody to take them?
Yeah, tub grinder's about $8,000 a day to get them tub ground. My question is, why can't we get a burn permit and burn those?
I don't know anything about that, so I can't.
I don't have an answer to that, but I don't know if I want to burn, an extended burn in a residential area.
It's $8,000 for a tub grinder, so I mean, either way.
Well, we did burn in the past and we got a lot of complaints from residents, and that's, so, I mean, the best way to do it for everybody is to put money to the side when the project's done, because we got stuff out there already that we should remove, and then have Bob and Jim work together to get, there's a company from Tampa, I think, that comes in and does it.
You can, they'll come in and grind for a day, but I mean, it's usually about $8,000. I mean, we've had to do it in South Carolina, it's about.
I think the price at the time that we got it, because there's quite a bit back there I think the price at the time that we got it, because there's quite a bit back there already, Jimmy, I think the price was around, around $20,000. You know, so obviously it'll be more because you bring them.
I'll get the tree down and take it back there. But that's something we're going to have to look at back there is, is how to remove that.
Yeah, we can't, I've been involved in a couple of things where we dumped dirt and had to, we can't just keep dumping stuff.
I'll take all the dirt we can. I mean, we don't have enough dirt.
Before you got here, we had, we had, I don't know how many tons of dirt we moved that we just dumped in people's property. I mean, we got to.
Take down the trees that you need to take down. Put them in an area and tell us how much it's going to cost to get rid of them.
Yeah, I mean, we need, we can't keep piling this.
I don't like the idea of having a big rush. It's not that difficult. Burning, I don't believe is an option.
I don't think we should burn either, really.
So just tell us how much it's going to cost.
Just bring a surprise.
Bring a price. Okay, now take care of that problem.
Yeah, I'll get rid of the trees. Like I said, I just want, I didn't want to keep piling behind Doc Brown's house.
I don't want you to do either. So get a price on what it's going to cost, get rid of them, we'll let you know.
Well, I mean, I'll haul them out there and then I'll get you a price on what it is for maybe a week for a tub grinder.
Yeah, but that's a problem, putting them out even there, Jim.
I understand, but I need to take the tree down. So somebody make a decision.
Well, we.
I think you should be allowed to take it back there for an hour.
Well, yeah, you can, but we're going to have to pay to have it probably removed.
Yes, sir. We're going to move it anyways eventually.
We, I thought, and Chris, you should be involved in this. I mean, this is stuff that we just can't, I mean, we had, we had tons of dirt that we, we put from taking dirt from the ponds on the golf course and just putting them on, over there by, off of ponds. And it's, they were on a road and everything. I mean, we can't.
Do we have a dirt problem?
But then we have.
We got a tree problem, right?
And then we turned around.
I don't care what you want to hear.
Ray, can I say, Michael? Michael or Ray, can I say something?
No dirt problem now, right?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, can I say something? All right. Absolutely right. Now, just listen for one second, Ray, listen to somebody, okay? Yes, we did have a dirt problem. We moved it from, from, and we put it on the road. Then it turned around, we should have never put it where we put it. It turned around and it cost us $30,000 to move it. So let's do it right the first time.
That's my point. Thank you.
So what do you want to do? Exactly what I said 10 minutes ago?
I don't know what you.
Cut the things down, put them in an area, tell us how much it's going to cost to move them.
There you go. I agree, Ray. I agree. I mean, we love to sit and argue all day about it. I know, calm down.
I'm sorry, did you say something?
Yes, I did.
What'd you say?
All right, all right, all right, can we go on, please?
Okay, I'll get them down. I'll try to get them down next week. As far as the dog, storage park, sheds park, we started bringing rock in today. We're going to put the 57 there. We had troubles with one of our trucks, a wheel bearing, so we didn't want to load it with that. So we got that fixed. But we're going to start with four loads and we'll start from the building now and get that area cleaned up as well. And then we do have fertilizer on hand that we're going to go back and put a granular on all the holes that have been completed.
And what are you going to do, the nematodes on the greens?
Already did it.
You already did it?
Yes, ma'am. Did that and tee boxes yesterday and Thursday and doing some fairways as well.
Thank you.
Any other further, we all good? Thank you.
Do you want to bring them up to date on that, the Turtle Run?
I was going to bring it up in the budget, but I'll go ahead and discuss it. So I'm, Carl and Andrew and all of I, we met Wednesday. I know it's a sore subject, but you know, it came in at 373,000. If we do, if we were able to do it, and Andrew said we could look at financing, the only reason why I would say do it is because you're going to pay $100,000 for him to remobilize. And if you did it within this year, is the fact that you can still lock into your pricing, which they just went up 20% on what we paid the last time. What we just paid for this job, it's 20% higher now, so it's just a consideration. But it would be anywhere from 100, 130,000 more dollars if, if you do wait.
But how much is it now?
373,000.
How much, 370?
Yes, sir.
That's if it's done in 2022.
Correct.
Which you can't.
Correct.
So it's actually.
It's going to be more closer to what we said.
It's actually 460 something like that.
It's going to be closer to the five, well, plus you don't know what the pricing on the heads are and everything are going to be. You're not locking in any pricing on your heads and your wire. That's what's volatile.
So what, you're not asking for 263,000, right? What is the price that you're asking for? Are we going to lock in that price now or would that be the reason you're doing it?
You can't really lock it in, Bevan, because if you, if you go outside the 222, the 373 is if Carl was able, if GT irrigation was able to do it in this, inside this year. So if not, he's going to pull off his equipment off property and then you're going to pay another $100,000 for him to come back or whomever we decide to do it, when you decide to do it. Your pricing on your product, on your Toro product's going to go up. The pipe's going to go up. And the availability is the other thing.
The price of 550, which is what we currently have in the budget.
Yes, sir.
Is still probably in the ballpark.
It's an estimate. Yes, sir. It just depends on what the pipe is.
Okay, what other, any other questions for him? I got a quick question. Did you check out Turtle Four, the tier, the tee box?
They're being treated for nematodes. I mean, that's.
I mean, it's all, it's all dirt. And if it's dirt now, at least where, the gold tee box where I was, was shot. And if it's that way now, I don't think, there's something else that's got to be done to it. So if you haven't, please look at it. See what you can do.
For Turtle.
Okay, and did you get anywhere? I know everybody's been really busy with everything, but the cart barn cleanup that we had talked about before.
Yeah, it's what I just mentioned. We're bringing rock in today for it. We're starting to bring the rock and it's for gravel. We couldn't do it because we had a bad wheel bearing on one of the trucks, the dump trucks. So we weren't able to go pick up. We were planning on doing it this week, but we started this morning hauling in. I'm going to bring in four loads of number four gravel, 57 gravel, and I'm going to work it out from the shed out.
Okay, do we need to power wash that thing?
We probably need to power wash it and paint it and everything. Kevin, we're looking at getting all the new weathers, trying to get the weather stripping replaced on all the sheds as well and just to keep them sealed.
Okay. Anything else for these gentlemen?
I just, I, I got a question for Mike, because I've been asked, this isn't necessarily for me, but did, when you hired a new professional and congratulated you that you did, I was just asked, I've been asked three times, did we go, did we ask, did we go out for Trune and we hired a guy from, okay, okay. I, I was, they just said, did you just hire local or did you go out to Trune?
In fact, we had several applicants from within the organization. We had some, we had, contrary to some of the other things that we advertised for, I actually had a lot of action on this one. So I went through 12 resumes, probably.
So we had quite a few resumes. And we, okay, okay, that's, that was just something that was been asked three times, so.
Okay, anything else for these guys?
Well, I got, I do have, I got a couple of things just to hit. Obviously, membership renewal starts in September, so those, those membership packets will be going out. I don't think we'll quite get them going today, but hopefully early next week, we'll, we'll send out our renewal packets. As we just talked about, we did hire Jason Beatty. He's a PGA golf professional. He's been in this market for 16 years. I've known him that entire time. He's, he was going to do an awesome job here. He already knows quite a few of all our members and a lot of the groups that play here. So I have high confidence in him. I just wanted to let you know, we had the Fireman's Golf Tournament last weekend and we did 273 rounds, which is about capacity for us in that, in that event. That event's actually grown so much, they actually use a third golf course. They played at Pinecrest as well. Coming up on the 27th and 28th is the annual Surtoma Golf Tournament. That's, that'll be over, the tournament's over two days, but there's a lot of folks that come in on the afternoon on Friday and play a practice round, so we do see some extra revenue there. Chris made note to it earlier that we started to meet with the Advent Health staff. We are planning for their second year of their celebrity golf tournament, which is November 4th, which is a Friday. We're highly looking forward to that. Obviously, it got rained out last year, but this year it's going to be bigger and better. We got it up there. It's going to be, that's going to be a pretty big one for us. It's not going to be the largest tournament that we run, but as far as, you know what we're doing for that, it's going to be great for, for Sunny Lake and the golf course and the district and the hospital itself. On the F and B side, yeah, we, we filled a couple of key roles as I, I've sent it out now. McGregor Gentleman, or better known as Chef Mac, he's been in this area for a long time, coming from the Palms of Sebring. Before we hired him, I made a lot of phone calls. Being on the chamber board, I, I know some fellow, fellow people that worked at the Palms, spoke highly of him, spoke to several other folks that, that had had some work done by him. Super confident, super happy that we got him coming on board. I think he's going to be a great asset to our team there. We also did hire an assistant F and B management, manager. Her name is Jordan. She's kind of doing a lot of training right now, filling in all the roles, getting used to every different position that we have on the floor there. And she'll move into that role probably closer to October, maybe a little bit sooner. We still have several positions to fill. We probably need about three more line cooks. We're still advertising for our banquet captain person. We do have somebody that's in their interim and that, that may be our future person. We may permanently fill that with that person, but we'll see. We are going to continue hiring all of our front of the house staff. We're going to need, you know, we're adequate right now for what we're doing, but as we go into October and into November, obviously, our team's going to need to grow. Last week, two F and B corporate directors came from Arizona. Spent about five hours with them. Mr. Hurley met with them as well. Boy, they have, they just have a lot of experience in the F and B business. They had a lot of great ideas, a lot of new trends that they're seeing in the F and B business, some things that we can incorporate. But they're going to put together a full report and I'll make sure that you guys all get that report as soon as it comes in. Just on the general side of things, we were talking about expenses. Our repair and maintenance is running a little bit high, has been for a couple of months. A lot of equipment, mostly cooler equipment. It's kind of been going down, so we're, we have to keep it repaired just to, freezer goes down, you don't want to lose your food. So we've got to keep all that stuff in working condition. I did want to note, as Chris mentioned, you had, back with the financials, you had mentioned that we're, we've been falling a little behind the last couple of months. But you got to remember that we do have the insurance stuff coming in that's going to cover a lot of those additional expenses that we had, plus some revenue loss. I don't, we don't have that figure yet, but that's going to put us probably not all the way back on track to where we were, but it'll get us a lot closer. So I just wanted to mention that. And with that, that's all I have for you today, unless you have more questions.
You know, we're probably going to forget about this by next year, but maybe, you know, we had a pandemic menu, kind of, sort of, last year. Maybe in the summer, we ought to have a reduced summer menu and not try to be such a full-fledged restaurant as we're trying to be. Maybe we, it would help us control the amount of food that we buy and, and the service that we give and how we prepare it, et cetera, et cetera. Just, just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, we're always, we'll always evaluate it, yeah. But yeah, that's a good point.
Well, I would hope that with hiring of a new chef, that we see more business instead of less business.
I mean, that is definitely the goal. And I know with, with Chef Mac, he actually has a following in Sebring, so I'm assuming there's going to be a lot of folks that do follow him. Restaurant revenue i- is up, but we obviously still need to control some of our expenses. Not satisfied with our, with that level, but obviously, especially in the summertime, we have plenty of room to, to try to grow revenue. So that's always going to be on the forefront of our mind is, is growing our business. So we'll continue to do that. And I think Chef Mac is going to be a key component to that, for sure.
I can go to any restaurant in town and I don't see a limited menu just because it's summer. That's all I'm saying. I mean, you can go to some of these places and it's, you order what you want. And it's, if, if we're ever going to be a restaurant again, some things have got to change and it's got to be some significant changes. And hopefully, what's coming in is going to cause that. If it doesn't, we're no better off than we are today.
Any other comments? Any public comments? I'm for all going right onto the budget. Mr. Halvik, do you want to make your comments now before we get into the actual budget? Since you don't want to hear the details of the budget?
Dave Alig, thank you very much. Let me regress a little bit. Chris, let me ask you a question. Can I please regress just a little bit?
Please do.
When you mentioned calling the, the utility service that we currently have as far as our low pressure systems specifically, about calling a plumber rather than calling a, if I got a problem with my low pressure system, I want to call the district and I want to have them come just like they do now. We're not going to lose that ability, are we?
No, you won't, but you're going to see a significant price increase that's going to go to market because they've been charging less than the pumps cost us. And they've also been doing work sometime troubleshooting people's control boxes or something that's on private property and they aren't electricians and that private system is private. It doesn't belong to the district.
Yeah, well, I tell you what, I don't want to wait three or four days and turn everything off and wait for a plumber. I know, I know that. I mean, hopefully, we're not going to use, lose that. We've lost a lot of good services that we had. I don't want to see that happen. As a matter of fact, I had a friend who had a broken top on his septic tank and he called the district and the district said they don't, no longer repair those or sell them or, he had to go somewhere else to get it. Is that true?
Yes, and, and I'm not aware that from my talking to staff that they ever got involved with lids and things like that. You know, it was really the pumps. And that, those lids actually do cause a lot of problems. They shift and then the tanks fill up with dirt. So, but no, sir, we'll, we'll look at that, but we've done the pumps part, but as far as us ever replacing tops and tanks, we haven't been in that business. And again, that's all on private property. And kind of what I, way I look at it, you fix it, you own it, and we don't own it.
Yeah, okay. And then for, for 45 years, we've been able to call the district and get service on our low pressure systems.
I think you still will.
Yeah, well, I think so. Let me get back to where I was going to go. In the intro to the website, you mentioned a 5% increase in assessments, 5.2 or $3 a month increase in utility bills. in utility bills. What it doesn't say is this is a five, first year of a five-year program, the way I understand it, where you're going to increase assessments for five years and utility bills for five years, in order to get enough money to, to service the $16 million note that we're probably going to borrow. Am I correct?
Pretty much. I mean, I stated it at the last meeting. It's, it's in the audio if you want to listen to it. But basically, it's 5% this year. And we said, we're going to, we're gauging it approximately at 5% for the next four years as well. But as we go through each year, it'll be reevaluated, and we'll redetermine if that's the right number, or if it's not the right number.
Yeah, but, okay. Do any of you, have you, members of the board understand the impact to the individual?
Yes, we've already get, we have that.
I mean, if I'd asked, if I would canvass the board, would you know what the impact is for a residential unit?
I believe yours is $170.
What?
I believe yours would be $170, approximately.
Well, I just ran the numbers. I know, I know that, and I don't know if there's been any consideration to try to balance this out, to keep the main part of the burden away from the residential customers.
That has not been addressed.
That have, that have a utility.
The utility issue of, which we, which I happen to think is a very good idea, of charging unfinished lots, some monies to go towards the capital fund, we're still working on. And I agree, we should do that, but we haven't finalized it.
Okay, I didn't know that was being, I didn't know that was, okay. And I'm glad, I'm glad it's, I'm glad it's happening, because.
I happen to think we will do it. We just haven't figured it out yet.
Okay.
And Dave, I, Dave, I just wanted to say to you that, I'm sure there's not many people, but I pay probably almost $300 more in assessments than I do taxes. So there are some people here in this community that the assessments will affect a lot more than, I mean, I'm glad that the county is, they're saving me 20 bucks, but I'm paying 30 more this year for, for assessments. But I mean, that's just, it's just something that happens.
Maybe I can afford it. Maybe somebody else can't afford it. But if you take a lot on a golf course, it's $770 now. And if you tack on, in, in, in five years' time, if you go 5% for a five-year period, and you, you increase the utility rates $3, $3.
Are you doing them all together?
A month. Well, I'm putting them together, because we've been paying, we've been paying for that capital, the utility rate for the 20 years. 20 years these people have been paying in, in, in the Uripa Fund. And I'm assuming that this $3 is going to go into the capital Uripa Fund.
That was mentioned at the last meeting.
Just like it's been happening ever since we start charging $7.10. Every time there's an increase, it goes into Uripa Fund. And it's up to.
That never happened to the point where it was utilized for the budget like they're supposed to.
The Uripa Fund, the Uripa Fund this year will be 822,604, give a dollar or two.
Right.
The general fund capital, which is the 5% increase, will be approximately $210,000.
Right. But you, but you, but you run it out through five years, it's almost 30% increase. And somebody that's, that's on a golf course lot, I'm just going to use this as an example.
Yeah.
Let me, let me give you two examples. A unimproved lot in five-year period is going to go up $38. A, a golf course lot, if you add, who has a utility bill, assuming that that utility bill is going up $3 a month, it's going to be $572. It's got to be balanced out, because.
Dave, we just told you that we are working on the utility side on unimproved lots. We don't have an answer for you. We're still working on it. We agree.
Where you got?
That we should figure out some sort of a charge for them. As far as the assessments go, considering the assessments have gone up maybe 9% in the last nine years, I don't feel bad raising it 5%.
I, I don't either. But what I'm saying is, I'm trying to, and I, and I appreciate the fact that you said you're going to try to balance this out. And you can do it with a single line item on a, charging a, a, a charge against a capital fund, even though, even though the attorney says you can't, you're doing it now. You're doing it now on a golf course lot. You did it on a hurricane charge. You can do it. So I, I, I just want to make sure that, or try to make sure that everybody understands it.
I'm not sure we're going to make you a happy guy with the answer.
Well, you're probably not going to make me completely happy.
But we're going to, we're going to do something, we're going to improve it, but we don't have an answer for you yet.
The guy that's not going to be happy is the guy that's having a hard time paying his utility bills right now. That's the guy that's not going to be happy. Okay?
The only thing I would say against that, Dave, I don't care where he goes, if he can't pay the utility fee that he has today, I don't know where he would go anywhere around here, and expect to pay a lot less.
I mean, we've, we, the chart has the rates for Avon Park, for Sebring. We're the lowest. What else you want us to do?
Well, by the time you add your county tax, and your assessments, and all these other increases, it's going to be a real burden on people. That's all, all I'm asking people to try to understand.
I appreciate your concern, but I don't know.
And if you do it on a five-year period, you're going to have three times the amount of money at the end of that five-year period than it does to, to pay a $16 million note.
I want to have how many times?
I ran the numbers. I ran the numbers. If you increase, if those increases, and I can show you the numbers at some point in time, where you're going to have, you're going to have, you're going to have three times the amount of money. A 40, a 20-year amortization on a 16-year point and a half note is $77,000 a month. If you run this 5% increase out for five years, and increase the utility rates $3 a month for the next five years, you're going to collect almost $200,000 a month extra in utilities and assessments.
Okay. So let me repeat this one more time.
Okay.
The, I can't remember the name of the rates for the.
Don't lose your train of thought here.
The assessment rates are going up 5% this year. That we voted on, that's what we're going to present at the meeting on September the 9th.
Okay.
The future says, we're thinking 5% every year for the next four years. We don't know if that's going to happen. We're going to review it each and every year, and make a determination what it needs to be.
Good. I agree.
Other than that.
Thank you.
I, but that's what I said before, perhaps. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Any, anybody else want to comment about the budget in general before we look at it?
Do you need me for budget?
I'm going to give you something on a little lighter moment, Dennis Swanson, resident. I heard about, first I listened to you about the burning. You don't want to burn?
I can't hear.
The burning? You don't want to burn? Well, you've got a lot of empty property way up here. Why don't you clear a spot? Put a, a small building in there with some kind of a burn pit with a chimney, so it's not going to affect too many other people, and burn it there. It sounds to me like it's $8,000 to have some guy do something one day. You could put up a building over a period of time. You'd save a ton of money. That's just a suggestion to think about. The other thing I got is, I was here when they were talking about the code enforcement, and he spends $3,000 a month to certi, to serve them. They're like $10. They gotta put it in the mail, and they also have to send it registered. That's around $10 apiece. Why don't they, you've got cops on this that live here, okay? Why don't you go up to one of these cops and say, hey, you've got nothing to do on Saturday. How do you like to make $3 a delivery if you walk around and deliver these things? How much would that cost? $800, $900? It's always been my experience that if you save a dollar, you haven't lost a dollar. And, and it seems to me that sometimes they just, you're talking such big funds. I, I understand that. And it's, and it's outrageous, and the cost of everything is going to continue to go up. But maybe look at some of the smaller things, and you've got some place you can save a few thousand here, and a few thousand there. And next thing you know, it mounts up. I just thought I'd mention it. But the fire thing, I don't know why you don't do that. I mean, if it's going to cost you $20,000.
We can look at.
I mean, how much property is up, up there anyways? How much, many acres? Anybody have any idea? It's got to be hundreds of acres, right?
I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
I don't know the exact amount. But I, I know when they wanted to go into that one lot there and build some houses, they couldn't do it because they'd have to expand Shoemaker Road. I mean, way in the back of that, where, what's, what's back there? I mean, it just seems to me that there might be a practical way, because you're not going to stop having lumber to get rid of. And if you can come up with a practical, what if it costs you $30,000 to set up a, a burned building?
It's a possibility. I mean, then, we've never had a problem with.
You'd save, you'd save, you'd save that money in a year. Thanks anyways.
Have a good weekend, supervisors.
Okay. Anything else besides, before we do budget? Okay. Budgets. Cover, cover sheets, summary sheet you all got. It says roughly that we're good for this year for $516,000. So it's a balanced budget. However, when you take the 822,000 and the 210 and put it into those do not touch funds, theoretically, we're short 515,000, roughly. So that means that.
Where are you at? Where are you at looking at?
That's on the second page, the second.
He's looking at the same sheet.
The yearly total, once you take all the monies out and the capitals out, we're short 515,000. But we have $1 million in those two capital funds. So if we take the 515 out of those funds, we still have money in there. We're good. Basically, what this, what the two pages tell you is, we have enough money to cover the needs for this coming year. And we'll have a surplus of 400,000, which will go into the, one of the two or both capital funds. Or you can put the money into the capital funds and take it out of our reserves, the 515,000. That's a decision we can make as we go along. But the bottom line is, is that we have the money that we need. Okay?
Right.
In regards to this sheet here.
Yeah.
If our totals out here for total operating revenue is 12,369, right? All three accounts, the general fund, golf fund, utility fund, comes up to 12,369, right?
And there, there is an adjustment that we're making on that, because where you're showing the golf memberships, that 3.1 million and the 1.5, that's our total revenue, and that.
You have the sheets, right?
Yeah, we have to reduce that cost.
Did you give them, you didn't give them the sheets?
I don't have any sheets. I have the same sheet.
These were the ones that were out here.
Yeah.
That's what I read. Well, look, what, what's your, what does yours read?
11,005, 11,520. Because what you have on your sheet is the golf fund has the numbers, the gross numbers, not including the cost of goods sold. So my number is lower than yours.
Okay. If yours is 11,120, what's your total operating expenditure?
9,287.
9,287.
Yeah. 387, I got. 820.
You did.
Yeah. On that summary sheet that I did, I did make that adjustment this morning.
The ones I gave you this morning.
Oh, those are on your desk.
You got them.
That's what, right here.
It's right here.
Well, if this one's not hole punched, this one is.
What do you got on the second sheet?
Huh?
Well.
You got your best, it's just the same sheet.
No, the other one. Where's the other sheet? I gave you this one too.
That, we don't have that sheet. I've got the little one. That sheet, we don't have.
What's it say? 11,000 what?
11,520.
He's got them. He's got them. Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Now we got it. Now we got it.
Yeah, I got it.
All right. Now we got it.
What are you, what are you checking?
Okay, now I finally, well, this, if, if in fact these numbers were right, you got 12 billion up here, and the expenditures are 9,200. You got to help a lot more than excess capital of 16.
Yes.
Okay, but now it's, well, this is 2133, so that makes me a little bit happier.
So anyway, what this thing shows you is that we're ending the year at 516,705. Give or take a dollar, I'm sure I made a mistake somewhere. Okay? The next page tells you this basically the same thing, that we're short 515,000. So, I mean, they balance out. But remember, we're taking, building those capital non-touch funds to almost a million dollars.
Right.
So the option is to recover that 515 from those funds, or to take it out of reserve and leave those funds there. We have the money. Either way, we have the money. Just a question of where we want to take it.
Right. But I, again, I don't see that we're negative on the 56, you got 519.
The 515 is because I took $1 million out to put into those, into those reserve counts that we can't touch. The eight, if the capital fund of 210,043, that's the 5% assessment money. The second line. The capital fund down at 822,604, that's the utility capital money that we're going to hold aside. That we said we hold, that's at $17.01 we talked about last meeting. That adds up to 822,000. So that's what that is. So those are money that goes into the capital, we can't touch fund.
Okay, I'm back with you.
Okay? If you put, if those weren't in there, you know, then we're, then we're good to the, to the tune of, what, 500,000, whatever it is.
Yeah.
So all I'm saying is that we're in good shape, the, the books are balanced, or the budget will be balanced. The question is, do we take 515,000 out of the do not touch fund, or out of our reserves? And that we can decide when we get there. I'm just saying the money's going to be there.
The do not touch fund.
Is the.
Is for.
Urip fund of $17.01 per month, per bill.
For stormwater and waste.
Yeah, for the wastewater plant.
So that's what that money is actually earmarked for.
Wastewater plant.
Okay.
And then the $210, which is the 5% assessment money, that theoretically is to help towards the cost of the sewer.
Yes.
Well, if it's a do not, just my opinion, if it's a do not touch fund, we should not do that. We should do not touch.
That's why I had to take it out.
I just, I just want to walk through it, because I'm thinking.
And if we have to.
This 519 is not related to those capital projects.
If you want to look at it without take, those monies being taken out, we're good 500, the first payment. We're good 516,000. It's a balanced budget, taking in 516,000 we're spending.
For what we said we were going, we would be negative of the 519. Right. Okay.
That's how you read it across the board. So theoretically, we can do, right now, if things hold true, we will be able to cover the cost of a swimming pool and everything else that's in that capital request, including the irrigation, when it's, when it's supposed to be done. That's how you can read that.
Yeah.
As of today, you can make that statement.
And, and that's correct. And it is a deviation, too, when you go, well, why are we looking at this now? Because the past three years, they didn't make that contribution into that fund. So Mr. Brooks is kind of rectifying past.
I, I agree.
Actions. And, and I'll also say, too, that when we come to our tentative budget here, and then we're pulling all this together, we'll have a real close look at what the carry forward would be in additional revenues that we have this year from the additional development that's been going on.
I've been really interested in getting that number.
I think that assessment, you know, we already brought it up from the 3.4, and then it went to 3.9. Well, the last calculation we did, we're at that 4.2 million. And I think it's going to push a little higher. And even on the projected revenues, or call it a carry forward on the utility side, last week, we did 10 new permits, and we got a check for $78,000. I mean, increasing that connection fee by 50% this year. So I, I think when you see all that in front of you on the 9th, you can make those judgments at that time.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Now, remember, that, that assessment number that you see here in the detail pages, that's with the 5%. That's the new assessment rate.
Yeah, I know. But it does, it isn't necessarily accurately reflect the additional assessments that are going to be in effect because of the building and lots that were built, or bought.
Well, no, we did that already.
Well, we put it in, but I still think it's low.
Yeah, we'll have a better idea once.
Yeah, and I, that's all.
I agree with Craig.
We'll get a, we'll get an, we'll get an accurate number, is what we're looking at.
But what I'm, basically, what this basically says is that we're in good shape for next year's budgets. We should be able to execute it without having any problems.
Yes.
Obviously, that's without anything major coming up.
Right.
That we've been, which I'm sure will happen.
Yeah.
And then to the actual capital, which is the next sheets, for the most part, didn't change. There was one change, I believe, that 35,000, we changed the security.
Yep, for the trucks. So we'd have two trucks.
Security number changed based on our last conversation. Otherwise, the capital stayed the same. And then when you get into the actual funds, I don't believe there was any changes in golf. In utility, Chris made a couple of changes. Chris, why don't you walk them through? Because it's with the columns on the right hand, the far right.
Yeah. What we basically did, too, is when, when you looked at that funding allocation for some of those positions, you know, we'll have a new finance assistant director starting. It's, looked at it, and it's like, well, you have about $4 million in general fund, 3.7 in the utility. So I shifted 50% of the salary burden for that position.
Yep.
Also shifted 50% for the permanent and planning coordinator, and also the finance assistant to reflect, because half the work they're doing is related to utility revenue.
Right, right.
So that was shifting from general fund over to the enterprise fund.
Right.
Another thing we didn't show in here that will come up in the rate case, is we had, call it a franchise fee, 2.5% off the top.
Right.
Of utility revenues going to the general fund. And right now, being conservative, we haven't even put that in there.
Oh, okay.
So that, that you'll see next, on the 9th.
So you've got meter rate increases, I mean, water rate, water increases, sewer increases, assessment increases, all in there. And unless somebody's got something else that they want to change.
Obviously, the increases.
Unless any of you out there want to change anything.
Well, Mr., I appreciate Mr. Halbig, and he had a good point. Basically, what he was talking about when he said these vacant lots in the utility world, they call it a service availability. they call it a service, a debility fee, and the consultant will address that because we could bump those as a utility cost. And add it or even for next year, but bring it in. So that's another source of revenue. And that's very common, because if there's a utility line in front of your house you can hook into, it's just like we increase the assessment for having a road and the stormwater in front of a lot. If you have that utility line there, you should be paying part of that capital cost for that line to have gone in the ground.
Do you have that number of how many lots?
No, I don't.
Fit into that?
No, that's why I couldn't pull it together and have a projection on it.
So, Chris, how are we going to know the magnitude? Can we get it?
Well, we can get it. I don't know if we're going to be able to do it for this budget, but we could start putting it together. And that, again, would be another utility fee. And the only other thing we're looking at is, you know, there was a bond that was paid for some of those initial installations. So where are we are with that? And that's a legal question.
So, Chris, by law, if the line goes by your house, do you have to hook up to it?
Typically, yes.
Right, okay. So we'll be getting those fees, too?
Yeah, well, if there's a central service, oh, yeah. When, when the people build a house, they're going to pay that connection fee. It went up 50% this year, and the other 50% is going to come next year. And I was going to mention to Mr. Halbig, we appreciate, you know, the affordability index. But, you know, the bottom three is Sun and Lake, Avon Park, and Sebring. And Sebring and Avon Park are working on rate cases and fees right now. And pretty soon, they're, we're going to still be in the bottom of that heap.
That's why I said.
The bottom two, you know.
Yeah, I think the utilities, I think we're fine in what we're doing, and if people are upset, you know. That, I, I feel sorry for them, but there's nothing we can do. The assessments is a different story. And we'll, the judge, we'll address that every year.
That's, yeah.
But the work, but it's good to tell people that we think it's going to be 5% for the next four years because we could be right.
Yeah, I, I think it's, you got to say it, but for us to, to.
And I think that is the worst case scenario.
Yeah.
We may be able to do, like I said, sing it.
But in Mr. Halbig's case, he's, you know, I understand where he's coming from, but he doesn't, he wants to talk about special assessments on certain things. We're a community where we should be doing a lot of special assessments to pay for some of the stuff that we're doing. But I don't think he wants to talk about that. So, I mean, I agree with him, but we do, we spend a lot of money sometimes on certain projects or certain things that the majority of this community doesn't see the impact, so.
I, I think, I think charging the unfinished lots or whatever you call, something towards the capital fund for projects like the wastewater plant and stuff, I think that's fair.
I do, too.
And the utility rate, you know, the utility rate that we have proposed covers the debt service for both the meter program and if we take out a long-term loan of $10 million. So that principal and interest is already in that proposed rate
Right.
that we've approved and to move forward. And like I said, you know, so it, it goes up $3 a month, you know, $36 a year like that. But when we look at chlorine going up X percent, some of these expenses, but we're still in the bottom of the heap on our charges.
Yeah.
So in relation to everybody else, we're doing a very good job.
So the question becomes, I assume all of you guys looked at each of the detailed sheets, maybe not the sheets you just got, but the detailed sheets. And if anybody doesn't have a problem with those, that's going to be it.
Yeah.
That's what we'll present to the public at the July, September 9th meeting?
Yes, sir.
You guys okay with that?
Is that the public meeting?
Yeah, I'm good. At that, the, September 9th is the tentative budget adoption. It is a public hearing, so the ad will be going in the newspaper next week, showing the ninth and also the final, and also the utility public hearing is on the ninth.
And the following one is when we approve.
Correct.
All right, so we've got a plan?
Yes, we do.
Good.
I think when you look at the carry forward and that increased income, you'll just take a breath and go, hey, maybe next year we're going to have to go up 5%.
Well, and that, and that, that's going to be interesting data.
The meter guys are going to make a presentation, not the meter guys, the utility guys are going to make a presentation at the next meeting.
Yes.
For the public.
Right.
And at that meeting is when I'll ask them their opinion on doing, doing a special, doing a special charge to unfinished lots, if they, if they think that's something we could do.
Oh, I think we can do it.
Who, who, who's going to do this?
I'm going to ask them.
Okay.
Ask who?
Rate consultant. They're familiar, yeah, they're familiar with that.
I'm going to ask them their opinion of it, and that'll be the start of the conversation that we'll have to take care of that. It's certainly not going to be something we're going to address in this budget. It'll be for next year's budget.
That's a good question. Got to ask that.
Yeah, we got to find out.
Yep.
I've already posed, I've already posed that to them, so they'll be ready to discuss it and what communities do it and what their typical charges are for it. And it would be based on that capital investment of the cost of those lines.
Anything else? Adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
10 to 12.
11.
I don't know, I think, I think all the rumors would scare me off because you guys do wonderful. Yeah, I was going to say, I thought you were going to question me on the rumors, that's why I threw it out there.
What is today's?
19, August 19.
I should know that, right? Does that make it easier down on the news light with you?
Oh, I thought you meant to say.
And I told him, I didn't get a chance to look at that website, I'll look at it this weekend.
The only thing, the only reason that it's.